Good evening, excuse me.
Bless pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we praise you, we exalt you, Lord. We honor you, your majestic power, your beauty, the creation that you have given us, Lord, to enjoy, to appreciate, to lift, and to also to be good stewards of, Lord. Lord, we thank you so much for the freedom that we have to offer this prayer up before this meeting. We thank you that we live in a country of tolerance, that we have freedom of speech, we have freedom of religion, Lord. Help us to express that in our love, our grace, and our understanding with one another, Lord. Lord, we thank you so much for those who are in our community, those who are fighting for it, helping it to progress, helping it to develop, Lord, that we may live in a better place for our children, and that this world will be a better place for all, Lord. Help us to build on those principles of love and respect for all people, and help us to respect the sanctity of all life. Lord, we thank you so much, and we are so honored that we are able to say, in the name of Jesus Christ, that we pray, amen.
Amen. Minister, thank you. And then move on to council comments. We'll begin with Councilman Heath.
Yes, I'd just like to point out that we're gonna have a neighborhood meeting Wednesday, March 11th, 5:30 to 7:30, at Fire Station 155, that's up off of Crowfoot Valley Road. Public Works, Developmental Services, Police, Fire, Utilities, and Parks and Rec will all be there to answer questions for anybody in District 2 that would like to stop by. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Valentine?
No.
Councilman Ford?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
Within the last week or two weeks, I've been notified by a few town residents about an issue occurring in Castle Rock with people growing marijuana in their homes, and the odor it's causing in quite a bit of the neighborhood areas. So I would like to direct staff to create an ordinance so that we can address this problem like some of the other municipalities have already done. Do I need to make a motion, another motion? So I motion for staff to create an ordinance addressing home growth of marijuana, and to work with the Colorado Cannabis Chamber of Commerce, as they have offered their assistance in writing the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion, do we, in a second, do we have any discussion? On this, Mr. Stevens?
Just a point of clarification, Councilman, it might be best if we first prepared a report that reviewed what different communities are doing and different approaches to the issue, rather than going straight to an ordinance, if that would be acceptable to you?
That would be fine. I would like for us to utilize the help that's been offered to us, though, since that is an industry that they want to see regulated because it's unlicensed, so I think it would benefit us to have that extra help.
Okay. Do we have a motion with a second? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That motion does carry 6-0. Okay, we'll move on to unscheduled public appearances. This time is reserved for members of the public to make a presentation to council on items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda. Comments are limited to four minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone signed up for unscheduled public appearances? Darren Weekly? Mr. Weekly, if you would just state your name for the record, whether you're a resident of Castle Rock, you do have four minutes.
My name is Captain Darren Weekly, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and I am a resident of the town of Castle Rock. I would like to chime in on Councilperson Green's comments. We're talking about major cultivation activity. We're not talking about medical marijuana use, somebody smoking marijuana for recreational use in their home. We're talking about sophisticated grow operations. If people are smelling what smells like a skunk in the west end of the meadows, you're smelling a large grow operation, it's not a skunk. So this is a major problem in this region. I'm here also tonight representing Sheriff Tony Spurlock. I want to commend the town for moving forward on this issue, to look into this issue more closely, and I'm also looking forward to the county also coming together, working with the town, to better regulate these issues. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Captain. Is there anyone else who would like to address council via the unscheduled public appearances? And again, if you would just state your name for the record, and whether you're a resident, you do have four minutes.
My name's Angie Doolio, I'm a resident of Castle Rock, I'm the director of the Castle Rock Museum. I know that you haven't asked for presentations this evening, but I did want to take this opportunity to introduce our new president. We want to thank our former president, Angel Horvath, who served us well for three and a half years, and I'd like to introduce Dorothy Kelly, who's also a resident, and she has been involved with the Historical Society from the beginning, so I really look forward to working with her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us a moment of your time this evening. We appreciate everything the town does to support the mission of the Castle Rock Historical Society and the operations of the museum. As historic Castle Rock experiences continued growth, the Historical Society responds to the entrance of its residents. Thank you, look forward to working together throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, it was nice to meet you, Ms. Kelly. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hello, my name is Keith Latimore Walsh, I am a resident of Castle Rock. I am a member of Wildlands Defense. Five years ago, I moved to the town of Castle Rock.
Mr. Walsh, are you gonna be talking about prairie dogs?
Yes, I am.
We do have an agenda item that'll be on, that you can address it at that time. It'll be Agenda Item Number Eight, I believe.
Okay, I'm sorry?
No, it's all right. Is there anyone else who would like to address council via, on any unscheduled public appearances? Okay, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. First item is listed on your agenda is 2014 Major Projects Work Program Final Report. So this is in your packet. As you can see, we had an extremely successful year as an organization and a community. We accomplished virtually all of our scheduled major projects on time and on budget, in the interest of time, rather than going through all of the, going through the report in any detail. I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of the major projects that we committed to and accomplished in 2014.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Also in your packet are the 2014 Organization Service Contract Year-end Reports, so all the different organizations that we provide funding to, we ask that they provide council with a report summarizing their accomplishments and what they did with the money that the council allocated to them for contracted service. So, again, in the interest of time, we suggested that most of the organizations not make a formal report presentation, but be available to answer any questions about their annual reports, so that would apply to the Castle Rock Historical Society and Museum, the Castle Rock Senior Center, Douglas County Housing Partnership, and Douglas County Youth Initiative. So do council have any questions about the annual reports from those organizations that we can respond to?
Any questions for Mark on those specific annual reports?
Okay. So, also, in the interest of time, we asked the Castle Rock Economic Partnership Organizations, which are the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Development Authority, the Downtown Merchants' Association, and the Castle Rock Economic Development Council, to present council with one report on behalf of all of the economic development organizations. So Frank Gray missed a meeting, and we asked, he therefore was assigned to make the report on behalf of everyone. So this is Frank Gray, CEO of the Castle Rock Economic Development Council, and the EDC is 2015 Chair of the Castle Rock Economic Partnership. Frank?
Mayor, Town Council, I know you guys have all gotten copies of our annual reports, so this is just highlights and brief overview, and then I'll see if you have any questions of this, so I'll try to make it short and sweet, as it looks like we have a full house tonight. So the Castle Rock Economic Partnership is made up of Castle Rock EDC, the town of Castle Rock, the Castle Rock Chamber, and the Downtown Alliance, and those groups work together in order to foster a positive business environment in Castle Rock, and making sure that we do really good work together. And so, one of the things that we realized early on in that, in Castle Rock, is that when those groups work together, not work off in silos, that we do a lot better. Since then, we've had several award-winning, won several awards for the partnership that we've created. And so with that, I'll go quickly through our slide presentation. So it talks about the mission here, achieving the community's vision through teamwork, performance, accountability, and commitment to establish economic development policies, goals, strategies, and priorities. Here is the 2014 objectives, which was, meet with Town Council members in discussions and update solicitation of council members' input, continue to pursue development opportunities within the town of Castle Rock, looking at all the different tools that we have, mostly the availability of development-ready sites and vertical space construction, and then implement targeted activities to increase downtown property values, taxable sales, and basically use the tax increment financing tool, the TIF, making sure that that's something that we executed, and then continuing to engage Castle Rock hotels, restaurants, and other tourism, and that's something that the Chamber does. Each organization has a lead role for each of these things, in creating the different roles within the organization, and we adopted a new document in 2015 that you will be reviewing with some updates to the existing document. So just some quick economic indicators, so sales tax revenues are up 6.9% year-on-year. Downtown has had an exceptionally good year, 13% in downtown Castle Rock, so that's been great. Residential building permits are down from 917 last year, but that's still, even though that arrow is red and headed negative, it still puts us in the top five communities in growth, so that's something that is still a really good number, even though that we see a slight decline in the overall residential permits. Unemployment rate is really the key, low, low, low unemployment in Castle Rock, which is great. In fact, recent numbers just came out, and they actually drops it to 3.3 in Castle Rock, and so we have a very low unemployment rate, which is gonna put a lot of pressure on wages. So that means that as we see a low unemployment rate, the competition for really good employees is gonna get harder and harder and harder to find really good employees, and so that's gonna put pressure on wages, moving wages up, so depending on how you look at that and what your philosophies are, that could be a really good thing for Castle Rock as well. So I want to give you just a quick overview, the Economic Development Council, again, talks a little bit about the unemployment rate, job growth, we're seeing lots of growth in the manufacturing sector, which has been really good, and we've seen more in the tech sector, lots of tech companies that are growing in Castle Rock, and a large part of that, I think, is due to the downtown project that we've talked about called The Move before, and it's created a lot of buzz around the community for tech jobs in Castle Rock, so we're excited to see that one move forward. So 173 new primary jobs. Talking about the 2014 total overall prospects, so we see prospect activity rising, which is a good thing for the EDC, and we're seeing a 92% lease rate as we start to bring those buildings to market, which is exceptional. I can't tell you, so basically you build a building and it's gonna be full, so we have lots of prospects that are wannabe in Castle Rock, and we're seeing an exceptional rate of filling that space as it comes to the market. So, we really see lots of positive things happening on that front, as far as Castle Rock and business growth is concerned. You can see that our lease rates are down significantly, almost in every single category below the metro area, so right now, space is at a premium in Castle Rock, trying to find spaces at a premium, and so consequently, we have issues with existing employers expanding, trying to find new space, as well as new companies wanting to come in, trying to find that space, and we appreciate everything that council has done in investing in infrastructure, because that's really one of the, really the key pieces that we see going forward, that as we invest in infrastructure, it allows more shovel-ready sites to become into play and allow us to create that space for our businesses to grow. So we really appreciate that. And then some of just some of the highlights, the Money Magazine ranking is Best Place to Live in America, and Top 10 Cities on the Rise, as well as some of our signature projects that we've seen in 2014. Just return on the investment of the town, we appreciate the partnership that you have with the EDC, and that the county has with the EDC, so great stuff that we see on the horizon there. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about downtown. So we spoke about The Move Project, I think one of the major highlights here is just the Downtown Survey, engaging the entire community in talking about downtown, and what they want to see in downtown Castle Rock. They want to see more restaurants, they want to see more specialty shops, and more events in downtown Castle Rock, and so those are the things that the Downtown Alliance, combination of the Downtown Development Authority and the Downtown Merchants' Association, are bringing to downtown Castle Rock, again, with the support of Town Council, so we really appreciate that. The The Move Project continues to move forwards, and we've got at least two headquarter relocations that we're looking at putting in that building, and as those become public, we'll be able to share those with everyone. And then you can see the beautification projects, they continue to grow every year, adding more decks, more flowers, more facade grants, to try to improve downtown, because it's one of the things that came out of that survey, was it said that downtown was a really important place to maintaining the community character, and so we really are seeing the growth of all the little programs that kind of make the big difference when they're all added up together and creating a sense of place. And then Downtown Development Authority is holding more stakeholder meetings, and they just added the new downtown banners for the winter season this last year, so you can see those on display, very attractive, very cool stuff. And then the Downtown Development Authority is also looking at some significant development projects, and they've done field trips to Fort Collins to make sure that, you know, we're doing, putting some of the best tools to use for the downtown, and then they're looking at an enhancement of Festival Park, which is the picture you see here, so there's lots of different options that could be made, and to make downtown a really a gathering spot for our community. Downtown Merchants' Association, which is, takes lead responsibility for running all those events, has done a great job, and now has six new events that we'll be adding this year, just to proof of concept on a lot of them, to see if they're really gonna work, and really gonna be great pieces that we can add to downtown, so more opportunity to shop locally and keep our sales tax dollars in Castle Rock. Between all the new things happening in downtown and the Promenade project, we'll be able to hopefully capture a lot of sales tax revenue of our existing citizens in Castle Rock, and not watch it go out the door to neighboring and surrounding communities. So I really appreciate the support of council on those two projects. You see the Downtown Merchants' Association, Starlighting Movies, this was the lineup last year, huge success, very big numbers at each of those movie nights, and so you're really seeing that that kind of brings a lot of that community character that we talk about, being able to take your kids, go down, go to downtown and watch a movie on a Saturday night, and it's good stuff. Downtown Merchants' Association also runs the car show, added the Splash in the Park, had the most successful Oktoberfest they've had to date. As you know, a lot of that is very weather-dependent, so if we have great weather on Oktoberfest, it usually is an awesome, awesome event, and if we have tough weather, it makes for a tougher event. But Trick or Treat Street, and all the different things that kind of bring us the flavor of downtown are all great. And then the Castle Rock Chamber of Commerce, some of their signature projects is they put together a community calendar this year, so you can go to their website and be able to look up events across the entire community, and know what's going on in the community, different things that are going on, their business training, they did 266 unique trainings, visits for businesses in the community, and then, and then the cross-marketing, and looking at different ways that they can put together a plan for marketing the community, which is, you'll see them roll out here in 2015. So those are some of the highlights from some of the organizations that we do across, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the town of Castle Rock's partnership, hopefully I've mentioned it a few times during my presentation, but also just specifically is the involvement of the town in the Development Round Tables, involvement of the town in putting together great timelines, and putting together great projects for the town, and constructive criticism when needed. So really appreciate town staff, they've been very, very responsive to the development community, they've been very, very responsive to the business community, and so just want to take a second to thank Mark Stevens, Bill Detwiler, and the rest of the team at the town that are lead the economic development pieces, and Town Council for all their support of the business community and everything that we're doing to try to make Castle Rock a great place to live and work. Without, if you have any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Gray? Nope?
Great.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank. Mayor and Council, in your packet is the latest quasi-judicial projects update, there are no new applications since our last report. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have about applications on file.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Mayor, also in your packet is the January 2015 Departmental Monthly Reports. Again, in the interest of time, we'd be happy to stand for any questions or comments that the council has about January reports.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens on the monthly reports?
Come here. Lastly, I'd like to introduce Public Works Director Bob Goble, who would like to introduce to council a recently promoted employee. So Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my distinct pleasure tonight to introduce Ryan Oberon. Ryan is our new transportation planning and engineering manager, and will move us forward as we proceed with Promenade and other great projects like this in the community. Ryan has an excellent education and experience record, he's got a batch of experience of college school lines and a master's degree in personal transport. He's got a lot of experience in transportation planning and engineering. Ryan's role in the Public Works Department is to implement and maintain all of the, operate all the town's traffic control systems, develop our transportation planning, implementation of that, and also coordinate with regional planning and traffic engineers, such as Ryan Oberon, distribution from county jurisdictions and neighborhoods, and also the resources associated with Ryan Oberon Resources.
Hey, Ryan. Thanks, Bob, appreciate it. Congratulations, Ryan, on the promotion, well deserved.
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thanks, Mark. Move on to the Town Attorney's Report, Mr. Sluntz?
Thank you, Mayor. Council recently approved Ordinance 2015-03, which was the lease purchase agreement with Wells Fargo for the golf course equipment. That ordinance was presented, and council acted on that with the wrong Wells Fargo entity, as you can imagine, Wells Fargo has a lot of DBAs. The ordinance should reflect the lease agreement is with Wells Fargo Financial Leasing LLC, period, and unless council has any objection, we will change the form of ordinance that was approved to reflect that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Everyone all right with that? Okay. Thank you, Bob. All right, if there are no additions or deletions to the agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion with a second? Do we have any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That motion does carry 6-0. Ma'am, but we do have some seats up front here, if, we've got, there's four or five seats, so, okay. All right, we'll move on to the Consent Calendar. These items are generally routine in nature, will be voted on in a single motion without discussion. Town Council may remove an item from the Consent Calendar. Item number five is minutes of the January 27th and February 3rd, 2015 Town Council Meetings. Item number six is Resolution Number 2015-15, a resolution supporting a local parks and outdoor recreation grant application to the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund, and the completion of the Wolfensberger Road Pedestrian Bridge Project. And item number seven, which is Ordinance Number 2015-06, an Ordinance Amending Sections 14-02-040, Title 15 Buildings in Construction, Title 17 Zoning, and Title 19 Sign Code Regulations of the Castle Rock Municipal Code, Second Reading.
Moved to approve the Consent Calendar, it's read.
Second.
Do we have a motion with a second? Do we have any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That motion does carry 6-0. Moving on to the quasi-judicial hearings, this is the due process hearing as required under Colorado law. Public comment will be taken on items, but will be limited to four minutes per speaker. Item number eight is Ordinance Number 2015-09, an Ordinance Amending the Town Zone District Map by Approving the Promenade at Castle Rock Plan Commercial Plan, Plan Development Plan, An Amendment to a Portion of the Castle Pines Commercial PD, 2000 Amendment. Approving the Promenade at Castle Rock Planning Development, Zoning Regulations, and the Promenade at Castle Rock Development Agreement, Investing a Site-Specific Development Plan, First Reading. Town Council will now consider a request for the approval of the Promenade Plan Development Plan, An Amendment to a Portion of the Castle Pines Commercial Plan Development Plan, the Promenade at Castle Rock Plan Development Zoning Regulations, and the Promenade at Castle Rock Development Agreement, Investing a Site-Specific Development Plan on its First Reading. In order to afford all parties due process, under law, Town Council members must be fair and impartial in deciding whether this application should be approved, approved with conditions or denied. In making that determination, each council member must consider the record, which includes the planning commission recommendation, staff recommendation, applicant presentation, public comment presented during the hearing, and other written public comments offered before or during the hearing. Under law, Town Council must evaluate this proposal based solely upon the record and the criteria established under the Municipal Code, which are highlighted in the staff report. It is important that each council member remain objective and capable of considering information offered into the record during this hearing. Number one, does any council member believe that he or she is incapable of evaluating and voting on the application consistent with these due process requirements? If so, please describe the situation and recuse yourself from further participation on this agenda item. Number two, does any council member have a conflict of interest or any other matter he or she would like to disclose prior to proceeding on this item? Council, we hear from the applicant, the public, and staff. Time for this public hearing is allotted as follows. Staff report, five minutes. Applicant presentation, 10 minutes. Public comment, council questions as needed. Follow-up questions, five minutes. Follow-up questions, five minutes. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been properly noticed under the applicable regulations for this type of land use hearing?
Ms. R.R.S.
Thank you. Staff introduction, please. Ms. Vosler. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens.
It's fine, Mayor. I just introduce Sandy Vosler, Senior Planner Development Services Department, who will make the staff presentation.
Thank you very much. Mayor Donahue and members of the town council, I'm very pleased this evening to have an opportunity to introduce the proposed Promenade at Castle Rock Plan Development Plan, Plan Development Zoning Regulation Amendments, which are amendments to the Castle Pines Commercial PD, and the associated development agreement amendment. This proposed mixed-use zoning would eliminate more intensive integrated business and commercial uses permitted under the Castle Pines Commercial PD. Planning Commission has considered the proposed PD amendment on January 22nd and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval to town council. No members of the public addressed the commission at that hearing. Following the staff presentation this evening, the Alberta Development Partners would like an opportunity to provide a more detailed presentation and description of their project. I wanted to mention as well, for an addition to the official record this evening, you have been given copies of letters received by staff via email regarding a concern over wildlife on the property. You've also been given an attachment or an appendix A, which is an attachment to the ordinance and the PD zoning regulations, as well as a copy of the planning commission minutes from January 22nd. So those become part of the official record this evening. This property is 166 acres, and it is located between I-25 and Highway 85, north of Meadows Parkway and south of Castle Pines Village within Douglas County. The North Meadows extension will eventually form the northernmost boundary of this property. The property was annexed and zoned into the town of Castle Rock in 1987. Portions of the property remain undeveloped and are the subject of this rezoning. Important elements of this proposed development plan and PD zoning regulations include the highly visible factor and the fact that this is the northern gateway to the town of Castle Rock. Therefore, the applicant has provided specific design standards pertaining to architecture, landscaping, and site amenities that are included in the PD zoning regulations. A 13-acre open space dedication has been made to the town of Castle Rock along the northern boundary of the property, which will serve as a landscape buffer to the county residents to the north, as well as providing a wildlife corridor. The North Meadows extension and the access to that North Meadows extension, as well as the design of Atrium Drive, are still a matter of continuing conversation between the town, CDOT, and the applicant. The Promenade sign plan is based on the town's initiated I-25 corridor sign plan. The applicant is working directly on final elements of that sign plan with CDOT. No LED signs will be proposed with this zoning, and information on the sign plan will be provided to town council once that is finalized at a future date. Finally, regarding impacts to wildlife on the site, as is town staff's requirement, we have sent requests for external comments to the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Division that responded with some guidance in terms of construction activities after March 15th, which would require a survey of burrowing owl and raptor nests on the property. The applicant has been working diligently to address the public concerns regarding prairie dog colonies on the site, and I'll leave the applicant to provide additional information on that. The surrounding zoning includes Castle Pines Commercial PD, which right now is developed as the outlets at Castle Rock, the Lowe's Home Improvement Store, as well as the Pines Apartment and Castle Villas. To the west and to the south, there is also portions of the Meadows Plan Development, which allows uses such as commercial office and industrial types of uses. And the Douglas County residential development exists to the north and to the east, as mentioned, Castle Pines Villages to the north and Silver Heights to the east. The proposed plan, PD plan and zoning regulations maintain commercial, retail, and multifamily uses, reduces the number of multifamily units to a maximum of 360. It reduces the maximum building coverage currently allowed under the existing zoning from 35% of the site to 25% of the site, and approximately 1 million square feet of commercial, retail, office space is proposed. Again, the dwelling units, the building coverage, and the square foot, the maximum square footage are all reductions from the allowances permitted under the current Castle Pines Commercial Plan Development. Castle Pines, excuse me, one second. So the development agreement establishes the obligations of the town and the developer related to development of the property. The highlights of that development agreement include allowance of the promenade to participate in metro districts to allow for the construction of public improvements. It recognizes financial credits and offsets that are authorized under the public finance agreement. It establishes the Promenade Water Bank. It also establishes owner obligations for infrastructure, owner obligations to obtain CDOT access permit, and complete off-site road improvements. Finally, the development agreement would vest the Plan Development Plan as a site-specific development plan for 20 years. Finally, the planning commission and staff find that the Promenade PD Plan, the PD zoning regulations, and the development agreement amendments meet the goals of the Vision 2020, cornerstone specifically town identity, community planning, and local economy. It also meets and complies with the principles of the comprehensive master plan, and it meets the requirements of the PD Plan Review and Approval Criteria found in the municipal code. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of these applications before you this evening. Mr. Peter Kudlip, a principal with Alberta Development Partners, is present this evening along with the Alberta Development Team and would like to present to council. Again, they would also like to have the opportunity to respond after public comment to any questions or concerns that have been raised. This concludes my presentation and introduction of this application. I'd be happy to take your questions now or defer until after the applicant presents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Vosler at this time? Okay. Mr. Kudlip?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Sandy, thank you very much for a great presentation.
Thank you.
She hit on most of the points that I'm gonna hit on, so it might be a little bit repetitive here. We're asking for approval tonight of the PD Amendment, the PD zoning, the development agreement, the design guidelines, and the vested rights. Our timeline, we bought the property back in October and have been diligently pursuing permits, SDP approvals, et cetera. As you may have noticed, we have already commenced dirtwork on what we call Block 8, which is directly south of the Lowe's Building. We had to bring in 100,000 yards, cubic yards of dirt to fill that site to bring it up to grade. The, next slide. The overall project, the overall project is, as Sandy mentioned, 166 acres. It includes, we call them blocks, so we go blocks 1 through 8. It's already on the left side of the page, which is the north side. There we go.
Is that top one?
Yeah. The, the, okay, you get it to work? Is the blocks 1 and 2 at the, to the top left, and blocks 7, 8 are down below. Tonight, we are asking for PD, for all these approvals, for blocks 1 through 6, which are outlined in the red area. It also includes the open spaces Sandy mentioned. 7 and 8 are presently zoned, and we have also already received our site development plan approval for those two blocks and replant approval. The overall project, each one of these blocks, as you know, there's a lot of grade difference out there. So as you can see in block down here, I don't know why, sorry about this.
Just hold down that front one, yeah.
I can't push it any harder. Sorry about that. We have a residential, up and left, right there, right there. So that's our residential component that's about 17.7 acres. It is approximately 50 to 60 feet below the commercial next to it, to the east, or up above it on this plan here. So there's a nice buffer in between that. There also will be a pathway, an activity center in between the two blocks to create some connectivity between the residential and the commercial. We're also trying to connect between the outlet centers with direct access into the property. We're waiting to hear back from them if they approve that. As Sandy mentioned this, next slide, please. We're reducing the density and intensity of the development. If you'll note, the existing PD covers 166 acres. This new PD covers 161 acres. The business commercial on the old PD covered 132 acres, 1,580 square feet of commercial and 500 hotel rooms. Our request tonight allows for a million square feet of commercial and 400 hotel rooms. The multifamily existing covers 1,550 units, and we are requesting 360 units. Open space, private open space, the existing one had 5.5 acres. We are providing 4.43 acres. Public open space, the existing covered 12.64 acres. We're providing 15.02. Right-of-way dedications, the existing covered 27 acres, and we are providing 17 acres. Maximum building coverage of the existing PD was 35%, and we are proposing 25%. The maximum building height for commercials stays the same between the two. The maximum building height for multifamily was 50 feet, and then 75 feet with special review. We're requesting 60 feet with 75 with special review. The housing types, they had multifamily and retirement housing. We're only asking for multifamily. Architectural design guidelines, there were none before, we're making them part of the PD amendment. And they were very strict and set forth not only the building materials, the vision, and also landscape materials. There will be declaration of covenants and easements throughout the property, basically a master deck over the whole property, and then individual decks on each block. They had some before, and we are providing more. Go to the next slide. These are some of the renderings of buildings on 7 and 8. We don't have any renderings done on blocks 1 through 6 yet, but it shows you the type of architecture. We're kind of going for a rustic contemporary look on the architecture. Traffic, we have submitted in the traffic impact analysis, has it been approved by the town? It calls for major improvements, basically on Meadows, on Factory Shops Boulevard, and up on Castle Gate West Drive, I get confused, and Castle Gate Drive North. Is presently being reviewed by Colorado Department of Transportation for final approval by them. As far as the environmental issues, we have a little bit of, if you can go back to the overall site, please. Right in the middle of the project, right there. I don't know why I can't get it to work. Let me try again. There we go. We have a little bit of wetlands area in there, but we have a letter from the Corps of Engineers saying they're non-jurisdictional, which means we don't have to do anything with them.
Can you come, please?
Pardon?
Please, come, please.
Okay, I'm not at the mic. Sorry about that. There's less than a half acre of wetlands in this area right here, and we have a letter from Corps of Engineers saying they're non-jurisdictional. There is a floodplain right in this area right here, and we have presently submitted for a clomar, which is a preliminary map revision. Basically, when they built the project, they brought a storm pipe down here, daylighted it, and then put it back on another storm pipe to bring it over to the master detention pot, and left this open. And it's determined is floodplain, and it just needs to be removed. We'll be piping it all the way. We've had a natural, natural resource assessment done by ERO. Iran Bean was supposed to be here, and I don't know if he's here. Okay, he's back there to answer any questions on studies he's done for us?
Could you please use the microphone?
Sorry about that. Iran Bean with ERO, who did our natural resource assessment, is here to answer any questions today. He also, ERO also did a raptor and burrowing owl study in May of 2014, again in August of 2014, and again in February of 2015. We will again have it done March 15th, as the Colorado Department of Wildlife has requested. I think, as you can see, we meet the code criteria for approval of this project and request your approval. I know tonight you're gonna hear a lot about prairie dogs. One thing I'd like to, what I'd like to mention and let you know is that they are, you know, are not an endangered species. We met with a group of, with Deanna Meyer, Sandy Nervig, and Gia Zilla on February 5th to sit down and discuss our plans and their plans and what they'd like to see us do. And from that point until last Friday, we were trying to do a partial relocation of the prairie dogs in this area to Block 5. Last Friday, the Colorado Department of Wildlife notified Gia of, she's with the Prairie Dog Coalition, it's part of the Humane Society, that the, that was gonna be a temporary location to this location here, and then there would have to be a permanent location in June, relocation in June. And last Friday, late last Friday, Colorado Department of Wildlife informed the Gia that the proposed relocation site, permanent relocation site, was unacceptable. And she approved, proposed to our team that we maybe consider working with them to provide some conservation debits. And that's basically, I don't know if you've heard about this, like a wetland bank, where you can buy wetlands and move your wetlands to wetland bank around the country. And we are in discussions with them about that right now. They have to do some more research. And as I said, this just came up Friday at 5:48 on Friday night. With Monday on the holiday, we've had discussions today, so we haven't resolved it, but we are working with them to do that. And our plan is to, since we can't find a permanent relocation site at this point, is to remove the prairie dogs before we start grading. You will hear tonight also that we started moving a stockpile over by Lowe's on top of some prairie dogs, since we were informed of that. We stopped that program until they are removed. I want to present to the record tonight, present for the record tonight, an email from Gia, kind of going over what I just spoke about, about not having a permanent relocation and working together on the conservation debits.
If you would just want to give that to Sally Mazer, Town Clerk?
Oh, I also apologize, I forgot to introduce my team. We have Lincoln Thomas, who's our civil engineer, Christopher Ken, who's our architect, Noel Ricardello, his attorney with Brownstein, Caitlin with Brownstein, and Brent Budson. And he is with White Bear and Ankle, and he's really here more to speak about the PFA than he is this, this subject. Sorry about that. With that, that concludes my presentation. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm more than willing to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Does Council have any questions for Mr. Kudlip or any of his team at this point in time? No? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, what we'll do at this point is open it up to the public for public comment. I do have a sign-up list here, and we're going to go ahead and work through this list. When you come up, if you could each just state your name for the record, whether you're a resident of Castle Rock, and your association with this item, and if you'd just please be sure to speak into the microphone. We'll begin, and I'm going to apologize in advance, sometimes I can't read the names real well, so I will do the best that I can and try not to butcher your name too badly. So, we'll start with Linda Van Norstrand.
Could you speak up?
And just before you get, begin, Ms. Van Norstrand, I'm going to keep pretty close track of the time, and I'll let each of you know, if you're getting close to that four minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Thank you. My name is Linda Van Norstrand. I am a resident of Castle Rock, Colorado. I am a fourth-generation Coloradans. My great-great-grandfather settled in Castle Rock in early eighteen sixties and operated a business of providing cheese and small grocery items to travelers just north of town. Needless to say, I possess a deep love of this place, and my roots go deep. At present, the town of Castle Rock posts beautiful pictures of open spaces on its website and can be seen on the electronic billboard at the factory stores. I don't see pictures of malls, housing developments, urban sprawl on any such advertisements or promotional venues for our community. Castle Rock is known for its beauty. Open space is essential and critical to have in our community. People are drawn to this area for open space and the ability to enjoy nature. Promoting this community through pictures of nature and open space while simultaneously overdeveloping in every patch of bear land is hypocritical and false advertising. Additionally, the building of this mall contradicts Castle Rock Municipal Code. While I am pleading for a delay in the construction of yet another mall, it is ultimately asking for this town council to stop and listen to what the people are saying. We don't want another mall. Leaving the open spaces will perpetuate the uniqueness of this place. Castle Rock is rapidly starting to look like Aurora, Westminster, and Highlands Ranch, which are all communities that resemble one another and are nothing special. This community has the opportunity at this time to do the right thing. What is not known by people making decisions in the interest of progress is the harm that is done when destruction of fragile ecosystems occur. When humans interact with nature, we frequently wind up redecorating it selfishly. Intentionally or not, it is as if humans have a powerful inborn urge to reshape nature, to expand their horizons. It is as if we just cannot help ourselves and little else, or stop ourselves and little else does, even the blatant results of our trying to dominate, manage, and control our surroundings. We move animals around as if we move furniture, and we redecorate landscapes with little concern for maintaining biological integrity. Is there a solution for this situation we have created? Creative proactive solutions drenched in deep caring, respect, and love for the planet can be developed to deal with the broad range of challenging problems with which we are confronted. Love also is an essential ingredient in the recipe for reconciliation. Its power must not be underestimated as we forge ahead to reconnect with nature. Often, we sit around and ponder the crises for which we are responsible, as wilderness and wildness slip away right in front of our senses. Primary forests have all but disappeared. Shopping malls and parking lots take precedence over the lives of threatened species as black-tailed prairie dogs, whose close-knit families are decimated by bulldozers and by drowning them in their underground homes. It is all too easy to throw up our hands and give up hope. We have truly made some egregious errors, but it's important to remain hopeful if there are any, if there is any possible salvation, if we are ever to reconnect to nature as our ancestors connected during their long evolutionary history.
You have thirty seconds left.
Indeed, life as we know it is only a blip in time, even more disturbing than a doomsday view that the world won't even exist in a hundred years if we fail to accept our unique responsibilities. Surely, we do not want to be remembered as the generation that killed nature. I would miss other animals and environs more than I would miss a finger or two, or an appendage. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Just to let everyone know, this is a town council meeting, and we do expect to maintain decorum during this time. I do understand there's strong feelings out there on both sides, but that's the last time that we're going to allow it out first. If that does happen again, we will begin escorting individuals out, so just please understand we do need to maintain decorum as we go through this item. Okay? Moving on to the next speaker is Keith Latimore Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Keith Latimore Walsh. I'm a member of Wildlands Defense. Five years ago, I moved to the town of Castle Rock. I had been planning to move here after years of stopping here on my way back from vacation in Connecticut. What enticed me to move to Castle Rock was the symbiosis between the people and the awesomeness of nature. My reason for choosing the particular place to live that I did was the abundance of wildlife that would be within walking distance. On my daily and sometimes nightly walks, I encountered all that I knew in this area to be: deer, elk, eagles, hawks, owls, rabbits, beavers, mice, and most importantly, the prairie dogs. I encountered these dogs every day and spent much time watching them to find out who they were, understanding how they live, and entertaining myself with their social skills between one another. I spent the better part of five years observing the colonies west of the outlet mall. I learned so much just by observing. Who did the prairie dogs share this area with? Who or what came to this area because of them? I observed gold eagles, bald eagles, prairie hawks, crows, magpies, and owls, small burrowing owls in the air and on the ground. It took me a while to identify the things that I had not seen before, but that is part of the learning. I observed deer, coyotes, and elk all in this area. In fact, there was an elk herd that came up from Plum Creek and walked up the hills on this lot last year. That is something I had not seen in a long time here. As the bridge project, known as the North Meadows Extension from I-25, got underway, the biggest thing I noticed was the sound of coyotes had disappeared. That in itself astounded me. Then I heard of the Castle Rock Promenade Project. I was inquisitive to every faction of this project, to no avail. My questions and concerns went unanswered. No one was willing to hear the voice of reason and despair at the idea of deleting my main attraction from moving here. I sold everything I owned to move here, to this spot, because of what it offered, not for reasons that I did not know of, the pending destruction of the major portion of a natural part of Castle Rock. All the research I did for my chosen residence was about to be undermined. I made calls to the IRE, to the managers of the intended residence, just to make sure I was making the right decision. And yet, it can disappear with a pen and the constant hunger caused by greed. These animals were my friends. They got to know me. They were curious about me. They learned that I meant no harm to them. After so much thought and sleepless nights, I had to leave my residence. I had chosen to be there for every reason, and you are intent on destroying, and as of two weeks ago, I could no longer live there anymore and move to the other side of town. I'm a disabled person. It is hard for me to do this. I feel I've been forced to leave a place I love because of greed. Has anyone asked all the residents of Castle Rock whether this is a good idea?
You have thirty seconds left, sir.
Does the elimination of nature for the economic reasons do justice for the people of Castle Rock? This promenade will do nothing for me, as thousands of others in Castle Rock will agree, some near, some far. The nature that is unfortunately was here and good to everyone who has seen it, money cannot replace the joy of nature, and given the chance, nature will take back what belongs to it. I see this mall as a shameful exposition of wealth and nothing more.
Your four minutes are up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Brenda Beatty.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Brenda Beatty. I actually am a resident of Douglas County, and I live over off of 105 in Wolfensberger. I have a Masters of Science in Biology, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the prairie dogs. The black-tailed prairie dog is a keystone species. I know you've all heard this, but I don't know if you know what it means. This is a very simplistic diagram of the food chain and the food web that the prairie dogs belong to. This picture shows just a smidgen of the animals that depend on the prairie dog for their very existence: antelope, snakes, burrowing owls, lark buntings, meadow lark, Swainson's hawk, golden eagle. And then I brought some other pictures to show you. I know they're not high quality, but, you know, they're from a Xerox machine, so just bear with me. The black-footed ferret, who's endangered. Let's see. Jack rabbit. The furuginous hawk, which is a state candidate species for listing. The bald eagle that shifts its diet to prairie dogs during the winter, and when they go back north during the summer, they eat fish. This is another ferret, and here's a ferret eating a prairie dog, dragging it into the burrow. Here's a coyote eating a prairie dog. Here's a coyote and a badger together in a prairie dog town. Here's a badger. Here's an endangered swift fox. Here's an endangered piping plover. These are state-threatened burrowing owls. This is a tiger salamander, and these are prairie dogs. So, you may wonder why all these animals are endangered. Let me go back one second and say that there are a hundred and eighty more animals that have been found in association with prairie dog towns. A lot of these animals become extinct because they are associated with prairie dog towns, and prairie dogs have been reduced by ninety-nine percent since the nineteen hundreds. What I want is, I know it's kind of ridiculous at this point in the game to say I don't want a mall, but I don't, but given that we may have a mall, I think we need to do a paradigm shift in our saving, in our thinking. We need to understand that the person, let's see, I have a bunch of stuff written down here, hold on. I would like this project approved with conditions. I would like the conditions to involve moving the prairie dogs in June, not in March, when the mothers are underground having babies and they stay underground. So, you would just move all of the males and leave the mothers and their young behind. Is that what you would like to do? Do you, do you want to see your grandchildren to know the prairie by only photos? All these animals evolved with one another for a reason, God's reason.
You have thirty seconds left, ma'am.
Okay. I agree that we can work together. I don't agree on credits. I think that your person reading the invocation said that we care for all things, and your person with the CREP mission said that we maintain community character, and that includes wildlife. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Beatty.
Hello, I'm Daniel Rifkin. I am not a resident of Castle Rock, but like the prairie dogs, I'm a native resident of Colorado. I understand that a large prairie dog colony will be bulldozer-poisoned to make room for a shopping center in Castle Rock. Regardless of any personal feelings or misconceptions about these animals, it should be recognized that these animals are Colorado native keystone species with close family ties, a complex language, and exhibit sentience. As a keystone species, their elimination means the disappearance of many other species dependent on their burrows or as a food source. It's time for huge multimillion-dollar developers like Alberta Development Partners, out to make substantial profits, to step up and do the right thing here for Colorado's native wildlife and concerned residents. Instead of destroying a huge swath of land and wildlife habitat, make the commitment to find an alternative location for these prairie dogs. This may mean procuring land within the county, possibly with the assistance of local partners for this local government to recognize the value of native wildlife and these amazing creatures, and ensure that concerned citizens are heard instead of being, I'm sorry, instead of the council potentially becoming a complicit entity to the building of a shopping center. I urge you as representatives of Castle Rock to use your influence and leverage to require the developer, Alberta Development Corporation, who has many financial and other resources at its fingertips, to be good as citizens and find a non-lethal solution to the prairie dog problem. This should include procuring suitable land within the county for relocation, as I mentioned. Is this not within the spirit, if not the letter, of the city's comprehensive master plan, which I've reviewed? Is it our legacy to destroy the last remaining wild places with native wildlife between Denver and Castle Rock for another mega shopping center? Is it only about commercial expansion and financial gain at the destruction of our natural heritage? Will our children be happier knowing we killed the last of the wild for another factory outlet? Peter Kudlip, hope I'm saying his name correctly, from Alberta, says that prairie dogs are not endangered species, which I think devalues the, over a thousand prairie dogs who are slated to be killed. It should also be pointed out that they are down to less than five percent of their historic range, and that is vanishing quickly. I also dispute the characteristic characterization of Mr. Kudlip as using diligence in his efforts to work with the concerned wildlife group. There has been, as I understand it to date, four acres offered to save some of the existing prairie dogs, which is woefully insufficient. He needs to make an effort to find land which is affordable to his corporation to save these prairie dogs. Tell Alberta Development Partners and Mr. Kudlip, don't just kill wildlife to build another shopping center. Compel Alberta and Mr. Kudlip to find the prairie dogs a new home and make this right.
You have thirty seconds left, Mr. Rifkin.
I have nothing else to say. I am disgusted if this development goes ahead without any consideration for the many prairie dogs on this site, and I hope you will be sensitive to the concerns of the many citizens here who wish to see something done which is not going to be in the tradition of what we have done in the past, which is just wipe out the prairie dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Randy Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Randy Meyer. I have lived here my whole life, which is forty-five years. I have grown up here. I have gone to school here. I have voted yes on any amendments or agendas that have been regarding open space. If I wanted to live in Denver, I would have moved there. I've continued to live here my whole life because of the small-town quality that we have. I think we do have a responsibility to protect the wildlife and our quality of life around here. here, large or small. Nuisance is defined by who and to seriously look at all impacts that any development has to an area. And we do have that responsibility to keep our small town small and to not transform it to a big city. Sometimes it's not about revenue-rich, but quality of life-rich. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Deanna Meyer.
I'm with Wildlands Defense. I'm also a longtime, lifetime resident of Douglas County. I was born and raised in Castle Rock and my family has been here for over 50 years. This town represents a small rural community with unique land formations and open spaces that make it feel like home. My memories are held in all of these natural features and in the wildlife that has persisted here despite the destruction since I was a little child. In the past two decades, I have watched one development after another move into this area as colony after colony of prairie dogs have been eradicated. And with these prairie dogs, the land is stripped of the hundreds of other beings that live here, the eagles, hawks, mountain plover, coyotes, fox, bobcats, reptiles, burrowing owls, whack-footed ferrets, and other countless species that depend upon the prairie dogs for their survival. As the land is continually stripped of her features and her wildlife, my memories fall into pieces and get lost underneath all that concrete. I'm not alone in these values. Everyone I know who lives in Douglas County values the open spaces, natural features, and wildlife here and list these values as attributes that attracted them to this town. Our own comprehensive master plan also acknowledges those values by establishing the guidelines for development through the plan that protect the small-town atmosphere, land formations, and wildlife. For example, as stated on page 8, 30S-4.3, quote, "Preserve land for the benefits of wildlife through the preservations of fragile ecosystems, habitats, and corridors," unquote. All ecosystems are fragile and taking out a Keystone species does not preserve fragile ecosystems, but rather tears apart the ecological web in this biome, destroying the homes of not only the thousands of prairie dogs living here, but also of all the other species dependent upon them. Prairie dogs are dramatically declining throughout this continent and because of the ranching and overdevelopment of the prairies, their populations are now down to 1% of their historic numbers. Our prairies used to be full with these animals. The largest known prairie dog colony was over 25,000 square miles in size. Our continent had between 1 in 5 billion prairie dogs living on the land and these animals supported over 200 different species that depended on them for food and shelter. When the prairie dogs are extirpated from these lands, the other species disappear along with them. Prairie dogs are, in no uncertain terms, an endangered species and every single last remaining colony should be saved. Imagine what the prairies and lands used to look like before our culture dominated the landscape. What happened to the prairie dogs happened to the bison, the great ox, the passenger pigeons, the wolves, the salmon, and the countless other species that once filled this landscape. All wildlife is now dwindling, falling to incredibly low numbers and in danger of extinction as we continue on this path held bent on destruction of the natural world. 200 species went extinct today. What is our threshold before we're willing to act in defense of life? Our county's own prairie dog conservation plan acknowledges that the prairie dog needs protection and land to thrive in our county. I am asking the council members to follow the directive in section 17.30.030F of the municipal code stating that, quote, "Consideration shall be given to wildlife impacts," unquote, before approving the major plan amendment to the applicable PD plan. In addition, I ask that the town facilitates a solution that will get these prairie dogs either moved on the county-owned land intended for prairie dog habitat or require that Alberta Development purchase land within the county to relocate these prairie dogs to. Specifically, I request that you delay construction on the Promenade at Castle Rock project until June so concerned residents and groups can get together the necessary resources to effectively relocate this colony to a safe and viable habitat. When a corporation moves into our county and proposes development-
You have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
...166 acres, most of which is the long-established habitat of thousands of prairie dogs, then Alberta Development, along with the town, have a moral, ethical, and legal obligation to consider the wildlife that has been living here for past decades. I am asking you to stand by the Castle Rock Municipal Code 17.30.030F and give these prairie dogs and all the other lives that depend upon them your consideration by insisting in their safe and effective relocation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Fred Gibson.
Thanks for the chance to talk tonight. My name is Fred Gibson. I'm a resident of Colorado Springs and I'm a retired lieutenant colonel. And over the course of the 25 years that I wore a uniform, I've had a number of opportunities to reflect on the nature of service. And I'd like to humbly offer this opportunity for you to reflect on the nature of your service and maybe to broaden your notion of what a constituency is. I've lived here for the most part of 45 years, after having lived in places like South Philly and the South Bronx. And when I got here, I was thunderstruck by what I saw. Apparently, this was what nature was and it was pretty cool. In the interim, this place has changed and not necessarily for the better, though. I wonder how many of us question the path that this town has taken and again, I'd like to have this be an opportunity for us to reflect on that. There's been a substantial focus in the Promenade Mall discussions on development with the assumption that development, progress, and growth are goods to be desired and I'd like to question that assumption. We also assume that development and growth is inevitable and I'd offer that not only is it not inevitable, it's not sustainable. And a couple of seconds' worth of math will uncover the truth in that proposition. Since development is such a tenuous proposition, we should at least be very careful about how it's done. This is precisely what we're asking the council to do. Engage in the due process and due diligence necessary so that we don't do something that can't be undone. I'm here to urge the council to enforce and live up to your municipal code and planning ordinance, which protect wildlife and our natural heritage. We're not here trying to stop development. We're asking you to delay the work already begun until you approve a major amendment to the PD plan. We ask you to follow the directive in section 17.30.030F. Consider the wildlife impact seriously. Give us a chance to relocate the prairie dog colony and help them survive. We'd also like you to consider your constituents as more than just the people in this room, that it extends to the environment we live in and all the life that's part of it. If there has to be development, it should at least be responsible development. Don't squander the ecosystem that we think that you were stewards of because we can't rebuild it once it's gone. And as a sign of good faith, if I can press my luck this evening, we'd like to ask permission to feed the animals that we understand are starving while everybody is deliberating what to do next. Then when all is said and done, we can thank you for your service. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, and thank you for your service. Next, I have Amber Pate.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Amber Pate and I'm a resident of Douglas County. Castle Rock used to be beautiful. It had a historic small-town atmosphere that coexisted with nature. It used to be teeming with wildlife. What has happened to this town? Have you seen it? It is now overrun with houses and commercial buildings as far as the eye can see. I strongly encourage everyone in this room to look at the direction Castle Rock is headed and what the agenda is. For myself and many others, it is turning into something that we lived here to avoid. Have you seen it? Have you seen the amount of animals that have been displaced by never-ending housing projects and now another mall? Have you seen the blatant disregard for nature that has consumed this town? I am here tonight to speak for the animals who cannot speak for themselves, who cannot defend themselves against corporate greed and industrialization. I am here to stand up for the largest prairie dog colony on the front range whom we never can give in consideration in the land development of the nation's largest mall by neither Alberta Development or the town of Castle Rock. How many of us have actually gone out to this site and observed these animals? Have you taken the time to actually stop, listen, and watch? Have you seen these prairie dogs and their families living in their home that they have had for decades? Have you seen it with more than land surveys? Have you seen it with more than your pocketbooks and bottom lines? The short-sighted mindset of these creatures as pests will soon be the demise of their species and many others who rely on them. Our short-sighted greed will be ours. Have you seen it? They deserve to exist as you and I do. The animals that depend on them deserve to exist as you and I do. None of this is about being a tree-hugging hippie or an environmentalist. It is about paying attention to the world around us. It is about stepping out of your suburbia neighborhood and stepping away from your office desk. It is about us opening our eyes and truly seeing with our being. Soon, everyone is going to need to be an environmentalist. We all share the same environment. All of our actions affect each other. We as humans, we as humans have destroyed 99% of black-tailed prairie dog populations and habitat. Let that sink in, 99%. The black-footed ferret and burrowing owls are endangered because of us. Industrial casualties of short-sighted greed. Do you remember the vast expanses of prairie dogs in Colorado? Do you see them anymore? No. They have been mowed down by the almighty dollar. When will enough be enough? We do not need more imported knickknacks to be sold here. We do not need destination malls and outdoor rec centers to bring in more tourism and revenue. We, as human beings, need nature. We need animals we need from which we came. When will this senseless consumerism end? Have you seen it? When will we start seeing with more than our bank accounts and finances? When will we start seeing again with more than our eyes? What will it take for us to realize that our selfish actions affect our children and their children? This cannot be undone. We are asking for the town of Castle Rock and Alberta Development Partners to give us the necessary amount of time to safely relocate all of their prairie dogs, not just some, because it is the right thing to do. It is the least we can do for them. The development can wait. We are drawing the line in the sand with this prairie dog colony tonight, right here and now. Have you seen it?
You have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Claudia Yura.
My name is Claudia Yura and I'm a resident of Douglas County and Castle Rock. I came to this country from Germany in '76. I lived in Los Angeles for 16 years and then relocated to this area here, to Boulder, actually. And when I rode my bike in Boulder, once I stopped in the middle of town, there was a field with these very strange little creatures I'd never seen in my life. We don't have any prairies over there, no prairie dogs. And I marveled about their communal living and just was in awe watching them for a long time. And I thought, besides of what obviously they are good for in the Keystone animal they are, I think we have something to learn from them as well. I saw no fighting while I was watching them. They were very communicative with each other, very alert, looking out for the babies and so on and so forth. And I thought, maybe they're here for a reason to teach us something. Anyway, what about, you know, I heard about the pebble jumping mouse and I know that they have, they're endangered species and why are the, if there's only 1 or 2%, I've heard that as well, left of the prairie dogs, why are they not an endangered species? Why do they stamp them like, not just a, what do you call these? A rodent, but worse even, there's another word and I can't think of it right now.
Vermin?
Yes, vermin. And I think it's as far as, I don't even know what that is. It sounds like worms. But, you know, do they, I know that the farmers and the ranchers and the cowboys, they didn't like them because they got in their way for the horses and all that. So they should have a right and a voice. So I think that's why we're all here. So I will, I'm hoping very much that Alberta will do the right, the right decision and create a good home for them because what right do we have as a species to simply kill a torturous, in a torturous and inhumane manner, animals that are simply in our way? Who gives us the authority to be cruel? When did we learn that it was acceptable to kill others for convenience? At what point is our natural inclination for humanity replaced with callous disregard? Did we learn this in school, from our parents, our churches? Would any of us here take a defenseless animal home and throw rocks on it until it died? I don't think so. Does it somehow make things okay if we have big machines do it? Are we then somehow emotionally divorced from the slaughter? How does it happen that good, kind people who would never want to kill at home transform into something, someone who does not care? These are questions I wonder about because I believe that people are by nature good and kind. When I look into the eyes of a child, I see purity and love. When did we deviate from that? How do we get back to who we are in truth?
You have 30 seconds left, Ms. Yura.
These are the questions we need to be asking above and beyond suggested guidelines of Douglas County. It's more than guidelines that are followed or not. It's about our very humanity as a species. If we have lost our humanity, then what do we have left to pass on to our children? What kind of a world can we create for them? And I know my time is up, so I'm gonna stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Christine Horowitz.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Christine Horowitz. I'm a Castle Rock resident and live in Castle Pines and I choose to live in this beautiful place because of the land and the wildlife that made it so attractive. I'm originally from Germany and there are no prairie dogs anywhere in Europe. They only live in America and that is one of the many things that makes part of this landscape so unique. The prairie dog is one of the most important species in the American prairie. Its numbers used to be so great that Lewis and Clark, on their journey up the Missouri River, noted that the animals appeared in infinite numbers. Now, due to the intrusion of man, this wonderful creature's populations have been dramatically reduced. We must save this animal, not only because we are responsible for its demise, but also because Western ecosystems depend on the prairie dog. Conservation of prairie dogs is of great importance to the prairie ecosystem. These animals were largely exterminated by farmers who killed the prairie dogs because they worried their cattle would break legs by stepping in the burrows. In reality, however, there are no documented cases of any cattle ever being injured by a prairie dog burrow. Hunting prairie dogs for sport and for pest control has persisted right up to modern times. If such hunting, ranching, and development continues, the populations will continue to drop very low and horrible consequences will follow for the ecosystem of the short-grass prairies. I ask this council to follow the directive in the section of the municipal code that states, "Consideration shall be given to wildlife impacts," before approaching the major plan amendment to the applicable PD plan. Specifically, I ask that the developer and council consider delaying construction on the Promenade at Castle Rock project until the option of an environmentally viable translocation of these prairie dogs to another site has been fully explored. I'm not asking for an extensive study, but the relocation of the prairie dogs that have called the area home for centuries. The Castle Rock Municipal Code calls for the protection for natural wildlife. The decision to kill thousands of prairie dogs that have been living there for decades actually goes against Douglas County's own prairie dog management policy, but the plans were allowed to proceed. Protection and management of prairie dogs is vital for many reasons, including the potential movement of more ecotourism people into- movement of more ecotourism people into Colorado, Arizona, New Mexico, Montana, and Utah, in search of the untamed West, only to find it disappearing on the parking lots, concrete, and super malls. As the Cree prophecy says, "When the last tree is cut down, the last fish eaten, and the last stream poisoned, you will realize that you cannot eat money." Please, let's not make this mistake. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Stacy Wagner. I am a resident of Castle Rock, and like so many other people you've heard from tonight, I too chose to live in Castle Rock because of its natural beauty, its wildlife, the beautiful topography that occurs here. I've spoken previously to this council and provided comments to the planning commission regarding my concerns about this project and impacts that I feel that it will have on the quality of life of residents of Castle Rock, the character of our town, and most especially, the aesthetic beauty of Castle Rock. I just want to add tonight that I support, I strongly agree with the comments that you've already heard tonight, and I also simply urge the council to do what is right in regard to the lives of these animals and to work with Alberta to find a solution that is biologically viable. With the project of an economic value of a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars based on published information, surely the economic resources can be found to relocate these animals rather than simply bulldozing over them. Thank you very much, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I hope you will consider very thoughtfully the very intelligent and emotionally, emotional comments that you've heard here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Next, I have Sandy Nervig.
Hi. My name is Sandy Nervig, and I do not live in Castle Rock. I actually live in Pine, but like Danny who spoke before, I am a Colorado native, and I do believe that all wildlife in this state belongs to all of us. And I guess what I'd like to bring is a little bit different perspective. I've actually dedicated the last fifteen years of my life to relocating prairie dogs and to preserving short grass prairie habitat in our state and other states. And I actually have been meeting with the Prairie Dog Coalition and the developer to try and find a solution to relocating these prairie dogs. And so far, we've run into a lot of, no, we can't do that, and not much, we'd be willing to look at anything or compromise. So that's kind of why we're at this point where we've come to you, and we think that there can be a very viable solution to relocating these prairie dogs. The biggest obstacle, obviously, is to find land, and we've been working on that. The Prairie Dog Coalition has actually been working on that prior to even engaging in talks with the developer. We continue to explore all options and would hope that Alberta Development and possibly the town of Castle Rock and possibly Douglas County could all come up with a solution to move this amazing keystone species so that we can preserve them as well as the other associated wildlife who, a lot of them are at risk right now, not only in our state, but for being endangered and going extinct in the near future. Just because prairie dogs are not listed as an endangered species, or blacktails are not, that doesn't mean they're not endangered. That means that they are not a sexy species who warrant the attention of most people. And I've actually worked with a gentleman, Dr. Korn Slabachikoff, who studied prairie dog language for over thirty years, and he has actually proven that prairie dogs have the most sophisticated language of any animal studied so far. He concedes that any other, a lot of the other animals, in fact, probably most other animals, might have as sophisticated of languages, including great apes, dolphins, parrots, other animals that we think to be very intelligent. But he has actually proven this through his scientific research. So I do believe there's a huge value to Colorado residents, to ecotourism, to wildlife viewing. I'm actually also a photographer, and I get endless hours, days, months, years of joy out of watching and photographing this wildlife, so.
Thirty seconds left, ma'am.
I would plead with you again to, if not, it looks like this development is going to go through, I would, I would ask that, like others have, we can delay it, we can find a solution to moving these animals, and we can save our native wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Ellen Heckner, and I am a resident of Rappahoe County, and I'm here tonight to tell you that.
Ellen, do you want to adjust your microphone up a little bit?
Right there.
Is that good?
Perfect. Okay. I'm here to say that I've lived here since nineteen sixty-two, and what was open is now paved and it's landscaped to what humans think is pretty, with landscaped species that are not native and require tons of water. I'm a horticulturist by trade. I know what I'm speaking about. So the things that prairie dogs need to live are not things that people need. And I really, really would suggest that, like everyone before me, they, they have said that the prairie dogs are valuable, and I certainly agree with that. I did a paper in college on nothing but prairie dogs. What I would say, in response to the gentleman that, the developer that was up here, the proposed changes to the zoning are only five acres less development. I don't know if that's why I got up and looked at that piece. Also, he said, quote, "There are, there is no good relocation site." That's what he said. Also, the Army Corps of Engineers studied the wetlands, which is not a great piece of this property, but at the same time, it's vital to the animals that live there because we have so little water naturally in Colorado. The Army Corps of Engineers has a terrible track record. Florida is paved, okay? They said it was all good and drained, and look what happens when they are relied on for their expertise. Also, there's thirteen acre buffer zone. It's landscaped with non-native species, and I just, the prairie dogs, they're not gonna, they're not gonna deal with this very well. What I would really like to see happen, which is not what everyone else has said, I think Castle Rock's doing pretty good right now. I think there's quite a bit of money happening here. What I would like to see, and I know this is against a lot of things, okay, what you would say, what you would believe, my best hope is that the town of Castle Rock buy this land from the developer and make it a wildlife refuge. Or put it under the Aegeus of the Nature Conservancy and the Prairie Dog Coalition. Progress should not come before compassion and respect for this ecosystem. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Heckner. Next, I have Emily, I'm pretty sure it's you, Emily Pacula? Is that right, Pacula?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hey. Hi, and thank you for hearing everyone speak tonight. I'm Emily Pacula.
And I'm Amanda Strohmeier.
And we're seniors at Castle U High School, and we're firm believers that environmental stability should be the primary focus of my generation as well as this council. As you've most likely heard, prairie dogs support over two hundred species and should certainly not be taken for granted. This development will undoubtedly exterminate a prairie dog colony if they aren't transported to another location, which, the chances of which seem slim. I urge you, council, to see past what is present and look towards the future. The prairie dogs, the prairie dog does not just support itself, it supports an entire ecosystem, and it makes our home of Castle Rock brim with life, and life that we must appreciate. It is the humble prairie dog that makes life possible for the golden eagle, the bobcat, and the critically endangered blackfoot ferret, just to name a few. It is clear that the protection of the prairie dogs is crucial for sustainable ecosystems, excuse me, here in Castle Rock, as well as everywhere else the prairie dogs once roamed. I'd also like to remind the council of one more crucial fact. The decisions made here at this meeting, or the next, or the one after that, will not directly affect this council. The decisions made here will directly affect me, my, and my children, and their children. It is painfully easy to pass on environmental problems to the next generation instead of dealing with them head-on. When we talk about sustainability, we have to understand that it is in fact us, the youth, that will have to deal with the devastating environmental consequences of a policy just like this. As a member of that group, I strongly suggest that you take this into consideration when you make your decision. Environmental issues are already a growing problem being unacknowledged on a global scale, and this is our chance to mitigate one of them. Why let an easily preventable problem now become an unnecessary regret in the future? This colony of prairie dogs should not become a victim to this and deserve more than they're currently receiving. As I stated earlier, they bring the town of Castle Rock life, and I know that I'd much rather have my kids look out and enjoy the view and the wildlife than deal with overcrowding tourism and buying who knows what at this mega mall. Mayor Donahue and members of the council, I urge you, as citizens of Castle Rock, as citizens of the United States, and most importantly, citizens of the world, to promote environmental stability and protection for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pacula.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Beth Ann Senderek, and I am a resident here in Castle Rock. I've lived in Colorado about half my life, and I'm raising two children here. I'm a neonatal ICU nurse at Children's Hospital. My life revolves around the future of people and the world, this earth that we live on. It is our duty to take care of this planet. That is why I believe that humans are here. We need to take care of each other and take care of this planet. This is vitally important. You just heard a young lady speak about how concerned she is about her future. When I hike around, when I drive around this community, my children look out, and they're like, oh, there's a prairie dog, eagle, falcon, hawk. They aren't, there's a McDonald's, there's a super mall. They don't, people just don't truly care about those things. That is not what makes us human. What makes us human is this planet and this earth and sustaining it for everybody. I just ask you all to look inside your heart. Go home, ask your children what they think. Ask them, because they are what is important. They are what is truly, truly important. That is why, why we are here. That's why we have children, to keep this, to keep ourselves going. And we cannot exist without animals and wildlife and wildlands. I would say that I am opposed to them all. I don't think that that's even a possibility at this point, but the least we can do is to relocate these animals. There's absolutely no reason that we can't. I don't know if you've heard of the Southern Plains Land Trust, but they are very involved in getting land procured for animals and relocating them. There are several organizations here that are willing to help. I don't see why we can't all come together and make this happen. It's the right thing to do. So I just ask you all to just follow your hearts and do what's right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Senderek. Next, I have Barbara Sunblade.
Hi. My name is Barbara Sunblade, and I reside in Parker, Douglas County. I'd first like to thank Mayor Donahue and the council for providing this opportunity to the public to express our concerns and possible solutions to the prairie dog dilemma. I have a distinct impression Alberta Development considers prairie dogs pests or vermin, if you will. They are not. Scientific data proves that prairie dogs are critical to the plains' biodiversity and long-range health. Prairie dog burrows serve as homes for burrowing owls, cottontail rabbits, rattlesnakes, and other animals. The burrowing activity of prairie dogs decreases soil compaction, increases water, and provides recreation for photographers and naturalists. Some time ago, I spoke to a representative of Alberta Development, I don't remember her name, but she indicated an effort was made to find landowners willing to take on the displaced prairie dogs to no avail, and that the prairie dogs would be killed and fed to rescued raptors. If Alberta Development has not made that effort, it begs the question, why not? I respectfully request that you act in an environmentally responsible manner and provide additional time until June to relocate these animals to a permanent safe location that will ensure their survival and continue to contribute to the plains' biodiversity and long-range health. As has been mentioned, there are many here who are willing to take on that task, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sunblade.
Hi, my name is Pam DeYoung. I'm a resident of the Meadows in Castle Rock and also a fourth-generation Coloradan. I didn't realize there was an organized sort of thing, so I'm gonna veer a little bit. I definitely lend my voice of concern to all those who've come before me. One thing that I was really concerned about when I heard about the promenade coming in was where's all the wildlife gonna go? Not just the prairie dogs, but gosh, the deer, the fox, the elk, the, just everything that makes this such a special place to live. And that applies not just to the promenade, but any other development. You know, I see the houses and stuff going in down Wolfensburger. I'm always concerned, and I know that development will happen, it's going to happen, but I think we can probably do a little better to make sure that we're considering how we're displacing the wildlife that live there. I do have one specific question and then just two concerns that I'd like to see addressed. I don't know if that's in follow-up here or later on the website. I'm concerned about, I heard the mention of the wildlife corridor, so I'm looking for more information on what that means, specifically with regards to the I-25 interchange going in. Are we providing, you know, places for the wildlife to go to and from there within the promenade development, whatever? So I'm just interested in more about that. As a Meadows resident, I'm really concerned about the traffic patterns. I fortunately work from home, so I don't have to commute for now, but good heavens, when this goes in, the traffic could be, just be monstrous. So I'm interested in hearing how that's been addressed. And then specifically, presuming that the promenade is going on, I'm very, I'm concerned about, gosh, the influx of chains. I saw that there's a Starbucks going in, and my eyes can't roll far enough. I saw that there's a Starbucks going in, and my eyes can't roll far enough back in my head for that. So I'd like to know what incentives are being given, if any, for locally-owned businesses, or at the very least, regional chains? Because if we're going to have a large development going in there, I'd sure like to see it filled with, you know, businesses that originate from Castle Rock and Douglas County and the surrounding areas, and not, you know, big-box chains whose purpose it is to put out-of-business mom-and-pop stores. So I don't envy you your jobs, but I appreciate you doing them. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. DeJong. Next, I have Patty McDonough.
Well, I haven't seen this many Colorado natives since I was in first grade. That tells me something. I was born in Colorado. Not that it makes any difference, but my family's been here for six generations, so we've seen a lot of changes. Some of them good, some of them bad. I lived in Denver, and 30 years ago, we escaped Aurora, Denver, Littleton, Lakewood. All of those same, they're all the same. We escaped, and we moved to West Douglas County. When I do my grocery shopping, I come to Castle Rock, because I don't want to deal with the suburbs. I don't want to. I live in Douglas County because of the nature, because of the wildlife, because of the sense of freedom that you get here. I love watching the animals. I watch them every day. I watch something every day. My grandson lives near the tech center. When I get him and I bring him out here, we stop, we watch prairie dogs, we watch deer, we watch... We used to be able to watch antelope. Can't watch the antelope anymore. So this is the first time I've got out in front of everybody and hugged a tree. I love nature, and I miss my favorite places. You know, they just keep disappearing. When I was a kid, when I was a kid, all my secret places are gone now. And it's not like where this development is going has ever been my secret place. But what is vanishing is the ability for everybody to just get out there and be with nature just for a few minutes and not be pushing and shoving and shopping and traffic jams and na, na, na. That's why people come to Douglas County. They don't come here... I mean, maybe you want them to come here to shop. Well, I'm helpless against that. But we have a little chance to do something to protect the animals that are here right now. And relocating them makes sense to me. It's a small... It's a small token that we really do care about the wildlife in Douglas County, and it's not just mouth. We have a little opportunity to do something, and the promenade developers have an opportunity to do something that will last in the hearts of people in Douglas County if they take consideration for the value we place on wildlife. They could do something unique, and it could be a real opportunity. I was sitting back there, and I'd forgot all about it, but my husband and I went to Detroit. Well, they don't have prairie dogs in Detroit, but the zoo there has the coolest display of prairie dogs I've ever seen. You go into a hole, and you crawl through a tunnel, and you pop your head up, and you're in the middle of the prairie dog colony. It's so cool!
You have 30 seconds left, Ms. McDonough.
Okay. Well, it just occurred to me that maybe something cool like that could happen, and I want to thank those kids that came from the high school, and I'm so impressed they came. And I want to thank everybody else who came here for the prairie dogs, and long live prairie dogs.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. That's all I had signed up at this time. If there's anyone else who would like to address council with anything that hasn't been said yet, feel free to do so now. No, ma'am, you've already had a chance to speak. Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to council now. There were a couple of questions that I caught on there from Ms. Pam DeJong, and talked about the corridor, which I guess kind of talked about places for wildlife to be able to kind of cross back and forth, if I understand that, if my understanding of the word corridor was the... That definition is correct. There was also some conversation regarding traffic patterns, and I think, Ms. Vosler, you might be able to address the... Or maybe Bob, go over to address the traffic patterns. And then, of course, we talked about the influx of chain stores and the incentives for locally-owned businesses, so we can talk briefly on that, too. But if we want to address the traffic patterns first?
I'm going to have Ryan from Public Works answer any questions about the traffic patterns, and then we can come back to corridor a little bit. And then, I think, in terms of attraction of tenants for the property, I would defer to Mr. Kudlow.
Okay. And Ryan, I know this is kind of getting you thrown right out of the frying pan into the fire here. Congratulations on your promotion. By the way, but I think what we just want to talk about is, you know, with the traffic studies that were done on this, you just talk about that at a high level.
Right. So town staff has been working with the developer for the past seven months now on the traffic impact analysis for this development. We started back in June of last year. We had a scoping meeting with both CDOT, the developer, and the town staff to hash out the assumptions that were made in the traffic impact analysis. And the developer has gone through several iterations of that traffic impact study now. We're on the fourth draft right now, so they've done a lot of back-and-forth with us to get comments addressed, to make the traffic impact analysis to a point where the town is comfortable with it. We're still working to get CDOT on board. There's just a few more issues to work out with that regard, but their study overall has shown that they, with a few improvements here and there at intersections, are able to account for and accommodate any impacts that their development is forecast to have. And that's using a 20-year forecast into the year 2035. So that's a brief overview of the traffic up to this point. If there's any other questions, I can surely answer those.
Any questions for Ryan at this time? I'm sorry, the public comment is closed now, sir. I'm sorry, this is... It's back to council for their action. Any questions for Ryan on that? Okay. Mr. Kudlow, we had a question. I don't know if you were here when they were talking about the definition of corridor, when we were talking about corridor, and I'm assuming that that was in regard to possible corridors for wildlife to be able to come in and out of the property. And I just... No, that's not something that we normally talk about, but I just wonder if there's been any provision made for that.
As planned right now, there are no wildlife corridors that go through the property. We did talk about interconnectivity for pedestrians through the property.
Okay.
So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm going to ask the public to just please be aware that the public comment is over, and please, no outbursts or talking out loud. If you'd like to go outside into the hallway and talk, you're welcome to do that, but please, not in the meeting. And then next, the last thing, we talk about incentives. Mr. Stevens?
Mayor, I think it was Sandy Vosler that had wildlife corridor reference in her presentation, so maybe she can expand upon that.
Okay, great.
What I was referring to is the 13 acres of open space that has been dedicated that will be between North Meadows Extension and Castle Pines Village. That is an area that will not be landscaped. It will be left in its natural form and can provide some habitat for species in that area. To my knowledge, there's no existing corridor back and forth across I-25 or Highway 85 currently for any larger migration of wildlife through this section of the town.
And, Ms. Vosler, that kind of brings us... That kind of dovetails in regard to... There was some mention of the municipal code, the 17 dot 30 dot 0 dot 3 dot 0 F, when we took the... Looked at the wildlife mitigation. Can you talk briefly onto that, as to what the town has done in that regard?
Can I defer to legal counsel on the reference to the code interpretation?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Yeah, the specific citation is to 17 dot 34 dot 030 F of the municipal code, which is... I wish we could have that up on a slide. I don't know if we can pull it up. But anyway, it's preservation of natural features, and talks about sensitivity to landforms, which is really not applicable when you have a mass-grading commercial project. But the provision that many folks have focused on is the Sub 3, which says, "Consideration shall be given to wildlife impacts in the layout of open space areas." So people don't often finish that sentence, but that's really the primary wildlife impact. And as Ms. Vosler just said, very significantly on this site, the northern 15 acres, which is currently, at least a portion of that, is zoned for multifamily.
That's correct.
And the zoning that's been given in the proposed PD plan is POS 2, I believe, which That zoning is passive uses, and the first use on that 15-acre site is open space, wildlife sanctuary, and trails. So to that extent, I think this provision of the code has been addressed and is reflected in the plan, is there, in fact, is a 15-acre wildlife sanctuary as part of the plan. The only mandatory provision in this code, other than to give consideration to, is the provision which says if there are threatened or endangered species present, then the development has to conform to state and federal regulations. And as has been indicated, there are not currently any endangered or threatened species on the property, at least prior to its... The season and prior to its probable grading in the next few weeks. So it is my opinion and staff's opinion that the application and the submittals in support of the application, the multiple wildlife studies that Mr. Kudlow referred to, in fact, are very responsive to this section of the code, that the staff and the council has available information to analyze that provision and properly apply it in this particular case. So I think the plan and the information presented is consistent with 17 30, the cited code provision.
If I could, I wanted to add just two other things. Staff has contacted the Douglas County Land Conservancy about a possibility of sites available to relocate within Douglas County, and they have indicated that the county has no place where they can accept the prairie dog relocation. And then, just to follow up on what Mr. Slence has said, in addition, as noted before, the staff did reach out to Colorado Parks and Wildlife, asking for referral comments, and the Division specifically indicated that these are not a protected species, that the prairie dogs are not a protected species, and that their only concern was that if there was grading between March 15th and October 31st, that a burrowing owl and raptor study be done, which the applicant has indicated that they will comply with completely.
Okay. Thank you. And that was the last of the questions that I was able to pick out. Was anything that I'm missing that council saw in there? Okay? Councilman Ford?
I did have a question for the applicant. Excuse me, at the beginning of the presentation, you'd mentioned about an attempt to work and do a temporary relocation, and that that was shot down by the Division of Wildlife. Did they give you any indication on why that was not an acceptable alternative?
The proposed site was not an acceptable permanent relocation site, so they didn't want to do a temporary relocation and not have a permanent relocation site already agreed to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Valentine?
I just had a quick question on one of the items that you said, that the multifamily housing is... Has gone from multifamily and senior housing to multifamily housing? Just curious as to why the change in that?
Because at this point, we did not look at the demand... Excuse me. Right now, we are only looking at multifamily housing on the property, and that senior housing has to do with the whole financial agreement with the town and creating sales tax revenue.
Are you continuing talks with the Colorado Department of Wildlife? I know you said that that option wasn't viable, but are you still working with them, or are you still trying to work through that?
We're continuing talks right now with the Prairie Dog Coalition, which is a part of the Humane Society, about the conservation credits. So we are continuing that discussions. Any removal of the prairie dogs from the site will be done under a Colorado Department of Wildlife permit and meet all their guidelines.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, at this point, I had to entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor, could we have just a clarification of what's in the record for tonight's hearing?
No, thank you, Bob. I apologize. So the public record of this Castle Rock hearing at this point consists of the staff agenda memorandum with supplemental information that was introduced by Ms. Vosler. There are packets of emails that we have received from the public that is part of the public record. We do have the staff and applicant PowerPoint presentations, as well as the public testimony and any other documents that may have been offered up by the public, retained by the county clerk, to be shared with us, and as well as staff inputs. So that is what I have, is the public record of the promenade at Castle Rock hearing. Is that sufficient, Mr. Slence? Okay?
I move to approve ordinance number 2015 dash 09, an ordinance amending the town's zone district map by approving the promenade at Castle Rock Plan Development Plan, an amendment to a portion of the Castle Pines Commercial PD 2000 Amendment, approving the promenade at Castle Rock Plan Development Zoning Regulations, and the promenade at Castle Rock Development Agreement, investing a site-specific development plan on first reading.
Second? Do you have a motion with a second at this time? Do we have any further development or any further discussion? First off, what I'd like to do is thank everyone who came tonight. This has been one of the largest town council meetings that I've experienced in my six-and-a-half, seven years here of being on council, and quite frankly, it was one of the most professional. I know there's a lot of strong feelings out there, one way or the other, in terms of this particular item, but very impressed with the comments that people came up, very thoughtful comments, very concise comments, did a great job of communicating your emotions and thoughts on this issue, and I greatly appreciate that. Here on council, we... Our job is to take care of all of our constituents, and I know that the comment was made that the prairie dogs are some of our constituents as well, and I understand that comment as the wildlife and the preservation of wildlife in our community is a big deal. But also a big deal for us here is to make sure that the residents of Castle Rock have an opportunity for jobs. They have an opportunity to purchase goods and services. They have an opportunity for the future families in Castle Rock as well, and that's something that's very important to all of us. I mean, I'm assuming each and every one of us out here lives in a house, and I'm assuming that when that house was built, there was some... that when that house was built, there was some wildlife that was displaced. I'm certain that some of us own property, and when that property was developed, that wildlife was displaced. I mean, I think that's just the nature of development, it's the nature of people moving here to Castle Rock. I think it's important for people to understand that the final plan at Castle Rock is to grow to a hundred thousand people. We're about fifty-three thousand right now, fifty-five thousand, we have plans to grow to a hundred thousand. We do have land set aside for that development, for homes, for businesses, for restaurants, for grocery, you know, and this is just, it's the way that it works when people move in. Now, we always want to be aware of threatened species. We've worked very hard to, we've got the pre-bul jumping mouse, that is a threatened species, and we abide by the rules when it comes to that, just as we're abiding by the rules with the prairie dogs. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We do understand that we have thirteen acres set aside for wildlife in this development, but we do understand too that it's important for the people as well to be able to have a place to do business, have jobs, and be able to take care of their families as well. So with that, any other comments? Councilman Ford?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to commend you, I think that's well said, I think that, you know, I too appreciate the comments that were made, and it's not easy trying to balance out, you know, how do you figure out where there's a happy medium in this? And I think that, you know, as we try and look at the development of Castle Rock and where we go from here, one of the things that I look at too is that twenty-seven percent of the town is dedicated as open space. That doesn't necessarily mean that the land right behind you is open space, but there's five thousand four hundred and fifteen acres dedicated in the town of Castle Rock as open space to turn around and preserve some of the natural habitat that's here. So when we talk about a hundred thousand residents, I know there's been references to major cities, I still think that that's part of the vision of Castle Rock and keeping it that small-town feel, and trying to balance out the needs of a place that we are going to grow as a community, and we are going to turn around and still recognize some of the things that really make us unique. So I just want to make that point. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? No, we do have a motion on the table. All in, I'm sorry, man, the public comment is closed, thank you. We do have a motion on the table, all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That motion does pass, six-zero. If you could please, please, if you're going to talk, please exit, please exit the room. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. At this point, we're going to go ahead and take a break. Then we'll take a break for about ten minutes. Chief Colley, if you could please, Officer Morrissey, if you could please assist, the more vocal ones out, we'd greatly appreciate it, we'd greatly appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene here and move on to the advertised public hearing and discussion action items. Public comment will be taken on these items, limited to four minutes per speaker. Item number nine is ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash O-two, an ordinance proven and amended and restated public finance agreement with Promenade Castle Rock LLC, the Promenade at Castle Rock Metropolitan Districts, number one through three, and the Town of Castle Rock, which agreement concerns the proposed Promenade at Castle Rock Retail Center, and providing for its emergency adoption on second and final reading. Second reading, Mr. Slence.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The public finance agreement has undergone a few changes, which I'll get to in a minute. There should be at your, at your station there, a two-page handout, which I put up earlier, which I'll cover in a minute. Obviously, just to remind council where we are, this public finance agreement was the very complicated and nuanced agreement negotiated over a long period in 2013, culminating in a 2014 agreement dealing with the town's financial participation and incentives to the project and all of the financing details, as well as all of the provisions on development related to the factory outlet mall and restrictions on that and so forth. The first bullet here, I think, is probably the most important one, is that this is, there are no changes to that financial deal affected by the restated agreement. So we don't really need to go back and revisit that unless council has any questions. The other change being made is the existing agreement provided sixty thousand square feet needed to be completed by July one, that's being moved to December thirty-first, and the applicant can address the need for that if it's not self-evident at this point. The other major change was the bond interest rate formula, the existing public finance agreement has sort of a hard cap on the interest rate that the bonds can carry. A couple of things changed since January, one of which was the market has moved a bit, and secondly, it was after further examination refinement of the financing proposal, determined that there probably would need to be some taxable bonds along with non-tax bonds, and this then led to some tax restrictions on the ability to use the add-on PIF, which is one of the sources of revenue for repayment of the bonds. What this changed affects then is that rather than having a hard cap, there will be a comparable interest rate analysis done when the bonds are issued. In other words, the districts will have to demonstrate that the bonds are being issued under commercially reasonable interest rates and other provisions for bonds of this nature, and that will be certified by Mr. Jeffers, our financial consultant. Finally, the, because of the disability to, potentially to utilize all of the add-on PIF revenue, one of the sources for repayment of the bonds, the districts have agreed that the mill levy, which was proposed previously at forty mills, may be raised, will be raised as high as forty-seven in order to backfill that lost revenue. So again, the overall goal was to assure the town that the bonds would be paid at the earliest possible time, that always being in our long-term financial interest, because A, obviously demonstrates it was a successful project, and B, we recover the one-point-one sales tax rate that we set aside under the terms of this agreement. The changes made from the packet, which I again apologize for, I realize this is not council's preference, but these were, became known on Friday of last week. The reflection, as I mentioned before, in three-point-three was to push that sixty thousand GLA to the end of the year, and then in section three-point-seven, the, there was an issue with recording the PIF covenants against the multifamily site, that really doesn't make sense because there's no, obviously no sales tax generated on that site, and this makes that option or exclusion able, makes that, allows that to take place. There is a proposed motion on the second page of the handout, which I would offer to council for approval, if that's otherwise the council's desire this evening, which reflects the agreement in the packet with the two changes noted. And I believe, Mayor, that ends my presentation.
Okay. Any questions for the town attorney on this item? Would like to open this up to the public, if anyone in the public would like to comment on this item?
Frank Gray, Castle Rock Economic Development, Economic Development Council has reviewed some of these revisions as well, and think that they are in line with the original agreement, and don't change any of the financial ramifications and are in support of town council taking on these amendments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment on these items? Okay, soon they will close the public comment, bring it back to council for action.
I move to approve ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash two, an ordinance approving an amended and restated public finance agreement with Promenade Castle Rock LLC, the Promenade Metropolitan Districts, numbers one through three, and the Town of Castle Rock, which agreement concerns the proposed Promenade at Castle Rock Retail Center, and providing for its emergency adoption on second and final reading with the changes to section three dot three of the agreement, requiring the initial sixty thousand square feet of gross leased area to be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and section three dot seven, eliminating the recording of the credit PIF covenant and add-on PIF covenant against properties developed for multifamily residential use.
Second. We do have a motion with a second, do we have any further discussion? All in favor of that motion say aye. Thank you. That was a roll call vote, I apologize. So it is a roll call, it is an emergency adoption, so we do need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Heath. Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Donahue. Councilmember Valentine. And Councilmember Ford. Yes. unanimous.
Great, thank you, Sally. Thanks, Bob, for reminding me of that. All right, we'll move on to item number ten, which is discussion and direction of MyWedding.com expansion and incentive requests. Mr. Stevens?
This is Mayor Council. This is a project that the town and the EDC have been working with MyWedding.com on for a number of months, tried to find a way to enable MyWedding.com to remain and expand in Castle Rock. Frank Gray, CEO of the Castle Rock EDC, has been the project manager for this effort, and Frank will make the presentation.
Mark, thank you. Mayor, Town Council, Frank Gray, Castle Rock EDC. I am here with Charles Oster of MyWedding.com, and the discussion that we want to have is just give you some brief background and some insight into what we've been doing. So in November of twenty fourteen, MyWedding.com was acquired by Meredith Corp., and Meredith Corp.'s Fortune five-hundred company. Obvious concern to Castle Rock is that, at the time, MyWedding.com has grown from a, having fourteen employees to forty employees, to now having close to seventy-five to eighty employees in Castle Rock, all in great technology, high-paying jobs. And obviously, when, we were excited for the management team and their acquisition from Meredith, but at the same time, that also creates a little bit of a possibility that those jobs might leave our community and be absorbed into maybe one of Meredith's other locations that they have across the globe. So we entered into negotiations with Meredith to kind of find out their intents and their plans for MyWedding.com, and so they were looking at several different options. They were looking at a full relocation out of the state of Colorado, but more likely was the relocation to another, one or two other locations in the Denver metro area. Part of that was talent, based on talent attraction and the difficulty that they have recruiting some employees to Castle Rock, and part of that was the age of the employees that they were trying to recruit and trying to get them to Castle Rock, and trying to get them interested in Castle Rock. They have to spend a little bit more money, both in salary and recruiting services, to try to get those employees here to Castle Rock. So they had some concerns, but overall, they were amenable to Castle Rock, they thought it was a good community for them to continue to invest in. So we had some long discussions with them, trying to figure out what it is they needed in order to remain in Castle Rock, and we concluded, or we hope to conclude, I should say, negotiations with Meredith, and asked them if they would really strongly consider staying in Castle Rock and keeping MyWedding.com here. And MyWedding.com's management team has been very amenable to that, and they've been working with us to try to convince Meredith that this is the right place for them to stay and to grow. And so we're really excited to get in front of you tonight, to give you, hopefully, an opportunity for us to not only retain the existing jobs that we have in our community, but they're also going to grow thirty to forty jobs here in the next six to twelve months. So we're really excited about having some new primary employment in Castle Rock. And so one of our, one of the negotiating points that we hope to drive home tonight is that should council find this proposal acceptable, they would sign a five-year deal to remain in Castle Rock, which is really exciting for us and expand their operations here in Castle Rock. So again, more opportunities for Castle Rock residents. Currently, a little over fifty percent of the employees reside in Castle Rock and Douglas County, so we're really excited about that. They try to hire as much local as they can, and we're hoping that council will see fit to give us direction to move forward with this deal. All of the pieces of the deal that you see in front of you fall within our economic, current economic development policy, there's nothing strange or different or outside the box, this is all very consistent with our current economic development policy in paying for performance. So the new jobs that will be created will only be paid for on the back end when they, when MyWedding.com creates those jobs and holds them for two years. So with that, I'll introduce Charles Oster to speak a little bit about MyWedding.com, and then we'll be happy to answer any more questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Frank, Your Honor, council members, thank you for hearing us this evening. Warm regards from the family at MyWedding.com, and our CEO, Woody Pastoreas, who is in New York right now, actually meeting with the leader of one of our sister companies, literally, he's meeting with Martha Stewart tomorrow, and pretty cool stuff, and he's also promoting something that's fairly significant in our community. Today, this magazine right here hit the racks all across the country, and we're going to need you to buy that. And here's the thing about it, you can look at it, but here's the reason that we want you to buy it. If somebody in Barnes and Noble, in Hoboken, New Jersey buys that, or somebody in Orange County, California, at Target buys that, it's supporting jobs right here in Castle Rock, and that's a big deal, and we're proud of that. So this is the first time that we've hit newsstands, and this is part of that Meredith effect, and so we're excited and we're passionate, obviously a lot of passion here tonight in this room. As Frank mentioned, again, my name's Charles Oster, I'm an executive, I'm the ownership team at MyWedding prior to acquisition, and I'm very excited that we get to stay here. Part of this courtship, if you will, our CEO was very, very intentional about finding an acquirer, a suitor, if you will, that was going to be strategic and allow autonomy. And in other words, staying out of our way, and then part of the agreement was to continue to grow. And so we want to make it really, really easy for our new parent company to say, "Roll, stay right there in Castle Rock," because our immediate need right now is space, like immediate, is space right now. So the good news for us is it's a matter of knocking down walls, there's no relocation of any, any species of any sorts, other than some of our dev people, which sometimes is a species unto themselves. So we're excited to be rolling with that, and you, I think anybody that is familiar with Castle Rock knows that we are very embedded in this community and desire to stay here. I mean, if you go to the rink at the, at the Rock, you see that literally our heart is there. Our iconic heart symbol is all over that place as a title sponsor, so our desire is to continue to stay right here in Castle Rock. And as we all know, Castle Rock presents some unique challenges as well, as we continue to try to draw millennial, professional, you know, young folks to work here in the tech industry. We can, we've proven that we can, we started with fourteen, we're up to seventy-five, and we intend to grow well in excess of a hundred employees over the next several years. So the bottom line is this, if you are to direct staff to move forward with this proposal, I will be on the phone tomorrow morning, directing to get those walls knocked down, and then the hiring shall begin. There's a company, there's a company called Trulia, that's right here in the Denver area, they were acquired by Zillow, and it's kind of the opposite effect, they laid off three hundred and fifty people today. I'm going to be on the phone with their HR director tomorrow saying, "We have jobs here." And so we are so fortunate, our acquisition means more jobs, where a lot of times you hear acquisitions means, you know, the retraction of jobs. So again, we're excited to be here, and with the support and partnership with the EDC and the town, this has been a good thing, and we hope that it's a great thing for years to come. Thank you. Is there any questions? Is there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Oster. Is there any questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What we'll do is open this up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this item, and seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to council for action. I move to direct staff to prepare an economic development assistant agreement with MyWedding.com as generally outlined in this packet tonight. Do we have a motion with a second? Do we have any further discussion? Now, I think that this is a great idea. I mean, MyWedding.com definitely falls into the category of the target market of what we're looking for, you know, in terms of jobs for our community, in terms of opportunity for the residents of Castle Rock. And I think it's a great value. Your actual service is of great value to many, many people. It seems to be growing rapidly. So, you know, Martha Stewart, we have to get a place for her here in Castle Rock, right? I don't know. She might be in Metzler Ranch somewhere. So I think that's terrific. Congratulations to you guys, you know, on your acquisition and moving forward with this. I think it's a real exciting time for you. I can't imagine what you're going through, you and Woody, and your families, and the other employees there, but very, very exciting for you, and we're glad that we can partner with you and give you a hand during this particular timeframe. So do we have a motion on the table? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That motion does carry 6-0. You have Martha's cell?
That could be arranged.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, which is Ordinance Number 2015-08, An Ordinance Approving Changes of Appropriations for the Year 2015: First Quarter Budget Amendment Providing for Its Emergency Adoption on Second and Final Reading. Second reading, Ms. Mueller.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight you have in front of you the second reading for the first quarter budget amendment. We brought this to you back on February 3rd, and it was unanimously voted in favor. This primarily addresses the additional amenities for the P.S. Miller Park. Those amenities include the Core Plaza, the outdoor amphitheater, the Mill House, and the associated improvements. In our budget amendment, we've identified the funding sources to cover the expense of those amenities. You can see on the screen where the funding is coming from, be it park and rec development impact fees, conservation trust funds, a contribution from the general fund, a contribution from community center, and other contributions, totaling the $8.4 million. The full $8.4 is not currently available, so we did have to do some internal loans, a loan from the general fund for $1.5 million, community center loan for $2 million, and then we also have a very short-term loan from the employee benefits fund. These are the items that comprise this first quarter budget amendment. We are asking for emergency adoption of this amendment so we can enter into contract with the successful bidder. That is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Mueller? No. We'll go ahead and open this to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this item, and seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to council for action. I move to approve Ordinance Number 2015-08, An Ordinance Approving Changes of Appropriations for the Year 2015: First Quarter Budget Amendment Providing for Its Emergency Adoption on Second and Final Reading. Do we have a motion with a second? Do we have any further discussion? Okay. It is emergency adoption on second and final reading, so just ask the town clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Valentine.
Yes.
Councilmember Donahue.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Heath.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 12, Ordinance Number 2015-10, An Ordinance Approving Changes of Appropriations for the Year 2015: Second First Quarter Budget Amendment. First reading, Ms. Mueller.
Thank you. The next item that you have in front of you is the second first quarter budget amendment, first reading. So it gets a little bit confusing. So we have, this is our second amendment to the 2015 budget. You're hearing it on first reading this evening. The main purpose of this budget amendment is the creation of the special fund for the Downtown Development Authority tax increment financing. This was brought in front of council on January 6th with a proposal to establish the new fund with the option to issue debt to secure the TIF and set up the special fund. On January 27th, Mark presented this as one of the strategic priorities in his presentation. At that time, we were to transfer $800,000 of sales tax dollars from the general fund, transportation fund, and community center fund, a proportion from each of those funds into this new TIF fund. That is the seed money that creates the TIF. That money will be used for downtown improvements and also involved in the issuance of debt for downtown projects. Any question on this budget amendment?
Any questions for Trish on this one? Mr. Stevens?
Mayor, I just want to clarify. This sets up the fund. This does not approve any specific uses of the money in that fund. Those will all be determined by council on individual project basis.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments at this point? That's the presentation, Trish?
That is the presentation.
Well done.
Why, thank you.
Okay, we will open this up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this item, and seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to council for action.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 2015-10, An Ordinance Approving Changes of Appropriations for the Year 2015: Second First Quarter Budget Amendment.
Do we have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 13, which is An Ordinance Approving a $1 million line of credit with First Bank on behalf of the Castle Rock Downtown Development Authority and in conjunction therewith approving a revolving line of credit promissory note, sales and property tax pledge agreement, and account pledge agreement, first reading, to be continued to April 7th, 2015. So I move to continue the first reading of this ordinance to the meeting of Town Council on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, at 6:00 PM.
Well, Mayor, I'm just going to briefly explain. So this and the next item, number 14, are the debt instruments that we've talked about. They got more complicated than anyone anticipated. It's going to take longer to get them to final form. That's the request for the continuance to April.
Okay. Do we do have a motion? Do we have a second on that? Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 6-0. Moving to item 14, An Ordinance Approving a $900,000 term loan with First Bank on behalf of the Castle Rock Downtown Development Authority and in conjunction therewith approving a promissory note, sales and property tax pledge agreement, and account pledge agreement, first reading to be continued to April 7th, 2015. I haven't made a motion yet. Just wanted to check, see if you were on that.
Mark's a rush.
Okay, I move to continue the first reading of this ordinance to the meeting of Town Council on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. Second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion does carry 6-0 as well. Item 15 is Resolution Number 2015-16, A Resolution Approving an Agreement for Construction Contract Between the Town of Castle Rock and MW Golden Constructors for the Philip S. Miller Park Phase II Construction Project. Mr. Hannah?
Great, thank you, mayor, members of council. We're very excited to bring forth you for consideration as directed on the January 27th meeting, contract between the Town of Castle Rock and MW Golden, a local contractor here in Town of Castle Rock, for Phase II of Philip S. Miller Park. And given the success of Miller Park over the last few months, this will be a very popular amenity used by many residents of the Town of Castle Rock. On Saturday, there was not a single parking space available out at Miller Park, and that was before the zip lines opened, and we only had, I think, two soccer games going on out there. So if past performance is any indication of future performance, this will be a very exciting project that the Town of Castle Rock citizens and regional partners will enjoy. So with that, Jeff Brower, the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, is here to give a brief presentation, and we'll be here to answer any questions.
Mayor Donahue, members of council, thank you for being here tonight. Wanted to put a little context to this discussion in regards to Phase II of Philip S. Miller Park. If we look back at the master plan, we've identified as Phase I being the Miller Activity Complex, the athletic fields, the challenge staircase, seven and a half miles of trail, the adventure playground, the zip lines, and the aerial trekking in the Headrush Tower. This work is quickly coming to a close, and so we're looking to move on to Phase II. Phase II of the work that was previously identified is the Core Plaza, and that's pretty much the center of the park, just outside the Miller Activity Center, and it will have areas for community gathering, the splash pad, the public restroom, and service building. It'll also have the pavilions, including the, and then just a little bit to the west of that is the amphitheater, Mill House, and Pond. So we're anxious to get started on those. Future potential development, which was identified in the master plan, does include an additional field space, and that area has been graded off as kind of the temporary parking area right now that helps us serve larger events, access from Wolfensberger, Synthetic Snow Park, and then the additional aerial trekking. So that gives you a little bit of context, and we're talking about the master plan for Philip S. Miller Park. You will note also on this particular map that we're showing the park as 270 acres. That is now adjoining with the open space dedication from Covenant, and it adjoins the Parkway. Parks and Recreation Commission did hear this presentation at their last meeting and fully supported the funding of Phase II as presented tonight. At Town Council, January 27th meeting, your direction was to go ahead and complete Phase II with the Core Plaza, Amphitheater, Mill House, and Pond, with some cost reductions, value engineering, and some additional funding. So we went ahead and we took that information, and we worked with the contractor to go ahead and to value engineer that amount out of the project. This project was publicly bid. It was a competitive situation. We had local contractors as well as national contractors represented in this bid. You can see the spread in there on this particular sheet, which goes from $7.8 million up to $10.8 million. The bid was broken down into the base bid, which is the Core Plaza, water features, restrooms, and pavilions. And then dependent upon our funding and funding available, we went ahead and included the amphitheater, trail, and parking as alternate number one, and Mill House and Water Features as alternate number two. So you can see that local contractor, MW Golden, was the low responsible bidder for $7.8 million, almost $7.9. So this is how we're proposing to fund and deal with the budget for Phase II construction. You see that the bid was about $7.9 million. We can do cost reduction, value engineering of about $500,000, and we indicated to you that we believe that we can find that without jeopardizing the programming of the park. We can do that with a couple of the areas we looked at was the pond and water feature near the Mill House. We looked at the landscaping, and then we looked at doing a reduction in some of the quality of the masonry or the quantity of the masonry throughout the site. So in our talks with the contractor, we can achieve that. We've gone ahead and we've reduced the amphitheater cover from this contract. When we had previously presented the $8.4 million budget to you, we believed that we were very secure in finding additional funding within the community to go ahead and provide some partnership and matching funding for that. We haven't been able to finalize that agreement yet. We're still very hopeful and working on that, but we felt that it was only fair to go ahead and take that out of the contract at this point in time. At any point in time, if we do secure that funding, or if council lets, that can come back into the project. But right now, we're representing it without that cover on the amphitheater. So you see, with those two deductions, the contract with MW Golden is at $7.1 million. We've recommended a project contingency here of 6.7% for $474,510. We wanted to make you aware of the additional costs of this project, and those are listed on this sheet: development fees, materials, testings, construction administration, and so total project cost of $8.1 million. Add the amphitheater back in at $289, and we come up with our $8.4. So we brought that back to you for what you directed us. Our recommendation for you tonight is the approval of the construction contract with MW Golden Constructors in the amount of $7 million, $107,083. And that also includes, that will also reference a contingency of the 6.7%, and that's included in your packet. Is there any questions at this point in time?
Any questions for Mr. Brower? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Green?
If you go back to that previous slide, it has the contract amount for $7.1, but I know you mentioned project contingency of 6.7. Should we amend that to include the contingency? Because the way the motion's written right now is just the contract, not the project contingency.
Typically, we don't include the contingency in the actual contract, just with the expenditure so that the Town of Castle Rock is in control of that contingency, not the contractor.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, so in the resolution that is proposed to award the bid, in section two, it has the $7.1 million bid award and specifies the contingency of 6.7%. That would be the maximum contingency without any other council approval.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to show you a couple of images of what we'll be purchasing with that Phase II. Core Plaza, and these are cut shots from the aerial that's shown on our website. This is the Core Plaza. It shows the splash pad area, the restroom building, and then a pavilion and some play locations along there, and this will act as kind of our large gathering area. This is another view of that. This is a pavilion within the Core Plaza. I want to go ahead and show the amphitheater and the parking. This is the parking as we go up the North Valley. You see, that's a pretty nice-sized parking lot to accommodate all of our uses within the Mill House and the amphitheater. This is the amphitheater itself. We can seat anywhere from 50 to 3,500 on that lawn up above, so I think it'll be a great location here in Castle Rock. You can see the Mill House roof to the right there, the red roof, and that is showing what the cover looks like, but that will be obviously something that we pulled from this contract. Mill House and the Pond, a simple structure, but the water feature is very complex and kind of a neat amenity there, and this will be a rental facility and also programmed facility through our recreation. facility through our recreation.
Any questions for Mr. Brower on that? Councilmember Ford?
I have a couple of questions. By the way, Mr. Hanna, on Saturday, I too was at the MAC Center and couldn't find a parking spot, and I think, you know, the success of this project really kind of shows through. I did the incline and can't walk for the last three days, and I'm sure that has nothing to do with me being in shape. But a couple of questions in regards to, I bring that up because I think it reflects that the council's decision to continue to move forward on the development supports, you know, the community's vision that this is really going to be utilized and taken advantage of. Couple of questions that I did have for you. I know that these are future projects. What is aerial trekking? And the second one is on, I know that is a future project, is the Snowflex Hill. Would there be additional requirement from the town for funding for the Snowflex Hill similar to the zip lines, which were primarily funded by and paid for by the zip line operator? Or, you know, how would those financials look, you know, as we're looking at this project right now?
Yeah, I'll let Jeff answer the aerial trekking. He's a lot more versed on the ins and outs of that, but as far as the Snowflex, yes, Town Council will be considering a lease agreement, development agreement with the P3 partners. Right now, we're trying to schedule the March 12th meeting with both public and potential confidential update to Town Council on the progression of those talks. They were actually in town all day on Thursday, meeting with staff and EDC and other partners in the community. So hopefully March 12th, we'll be able to give, like 17th, be able to give Town Council and the public an update, as well as confidential report on our progression of those lease agreements.
Just in response to councilman's question, the objective and intent is that's entirely a privately funded project and does not require any additional town funds?
Yes. Yeah, that was, thank you. In relation to the ask for tonight for council for the development of the others, is this going to be an additional ask, or is this a privately funded entity?
No, we privately funded. The town's interest will be a low, no-cost lease agreement with the entity, just like we did with Zip Line and potential revenue-sharing opportunities as well, too, again, just as we've done with Castle Rock Zip Line Tours.
Perfect. Thank you.
Aerial trekking can best be described as a ropes course on steroids. It includes nets, bridges, climbers, associated type amenities. It's basically constructed and then operated kind of on an hourly rate. So you can do it a number of different ways, but typically what happens is when you enter into the maze of activities is you are trained, and then you proceed through these activities by yourself or with your group, and you learn how to do all the attachments and make all the ascents and descents and everything through the course.
Thank you. I didn't know that's what we were calling. That was aerial trekking. My bad. I thought it was a ropes course.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay. What we'll do is open this up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to make a comment, don't feel obliged. You just happen to be the only ones there. We'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to council for action.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-16, a resolution approving an agreement for construction contract between the Town of Castle Rock and M.W. Golden Constructors in the amount of 7 million, 107,083 for the Philip S. Miller Park Phase II Construction Project.
Second. Do you have a motion with a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Brower. Mr. Hanna? Right, moving on. Item 16 is Resolution Number 2015-17, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Water Rights Brokerage Agreement with Stillwater Resources and Investments Incorporated. Mr. Marlowe?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you tonight is a simple item. We're simply requesting to extend the existing Water Rights Brokerage Agreement that we have with Stillwater Resources for an additional two years. We're not looking to change any of the existing conditions of the agreement, and Stillwater, of course, is the company that's helping us get the water rights for Box Elder. Matt Benak, our Water Resources Manager, will give you a brief overview of this, and we'll be here for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As Mark mentioned, Stillwater is our water rights broker, and we want to extend their agreement for an additional two years. Stillwater has done a very good job for us over the past two-year period. They were instrumental in putting together, or helping us put together, the Box Elder Option Agreement, as well as the Roth Water Rights Purchase. Currently, they are working on term sheets for additional purchases and partnerships, and again, would highly recommend them for an extension of another two years. Again, we're not looking for any changes, as Mark had mentioned. Stillwater does not get compensated for any of their services until closing, until getting us a deal that we can act upon. So these are very favorable terms to the town. As far as budget goes, there is no impact to this extension on our budget. We have budgeted the purchase of 400 acre feet of additional water rights per year for the next five years. However, we are putting some pressure on Stillwater to assist us with obtaining the additional 1,700 acre feet of water rights we would need to make the Box Elder project whole, as there is some serious financial impacts to the town by closing on that early. Positive impacts to the town. So with that, I would open it up for any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for staff? Nope. Open this up to the public. If there's any comments on this item. See none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to council for action.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-17.
Second.
Do you have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion does carry 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 17 is Resolution Number 2015-18, a resolution in support of legislation to protect public regional stormwater management activities. Mr. Marlowe?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Again, another very brief item for you. We are bringing forward some legislation tonight regarding the regulation of water and stormwater ponds that the state engineer would like to regulate through Water Court. I have David Van Del in our stormwater manager here to give you a very brief overview of the legislation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As Mark mentioned, it was brought to our attention from the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District of Denver that the state engineer's office is seeking to impose water rights regulations on regional stormwater facilities. Even though for the past several years and even decades, the state engineer's office has allowed individual site detention facilities under an exemption under their ruling for those facilities. Now, the regional facilities function essentially the same as individual detention ponds for water quality and detention. However, that was not included in the formal rule by the state engineer's office, and so they are attempting to exercise their ability to regulate on those particular facilities. So we're before you tonight to ask for your support of proposed legislation that would formally exempt the regional facilities, along with individual, from these, what we would consider overreaching regulations by the state engineer's office. If the engineer's office is successful in imposing these regulations, it would be a substantial impact to time and especially money for municipalities throughout the state. This is really not a common sense approach. This is something that for decades, the state engineer has been silent on and has brought this only to the surface recently, and these facilities are required for environmental protection and for public safety, and it's been the industry practice since 1972. In terms of the proposed bill, which is going forward in 2015 to the Colorado General Assembly, it does have bipartisan support, along with local support from Douglas County, Parker, Lone Tree, among others. With that, staff is recommending a resolution of support for the proposed legislation. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for staff? On this, Peter, just to double check, I mean, my understanding is the majority of municipalities up and down the front range are in favor of this, and they're actually, are in favor of preventing the state engineer from moving forward on this. It just seems like just more overreach government regulation is just really not necessary. It's like trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. That, I mean, that seems to be kind of the gist of what I'm getting. Is that?
That's correct. There are over 30 municipalities that have or will be indicating their support of this legislation, and again, this is something that for decades has been in place, and the engineer's office has not approached the subject until now.
And there hasn't been like any type of major issue or problem that has come out that has spurred the engineer to do this? It's just, hey, look what's on my desk type thing? I mean, is that?
Again, there's no formal exemption of those regional facilities, and so they're administratively exercising that right to impose those regulations.
All right. Thank you. Again, we'll open this up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment. See none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to council for action. I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-18, a resolution in support of legislation to protect public regional stormwater management activities. Do you have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, David. Moving on, item 18 is Discussion and Direction for 2015 Major Projects Work Programs. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So as you know, every year, we present, council adopts a major projects work program that sets priorities and gives guidance to staff for things we need to accomplish in that year. We derive the items from the budget, from council direction, council priority setting, and also organizational or planning initiatives that come forward from the staff leadership team. So before you, you have the draft of the proposed 2015 program. You'll see that all the major things from the budget discussions and from the January 27th, financial and strategic priorities are in there. The proposed, or the planned November 2015 Charter Amendment election is in there, the plan, the need to do amendments to the town election code in the event that that Charter Amendment is not approved is in there. All the various planning projects that we've talked about, capital improvement projects we've talked about are all included, so it's a very ambitious set of things to try to get done this year. That's what we do every year, and every year we do an excellent job of completing 95% or more of what we put into the major projects work program. So this is a really valuable thing to help keep us focused. Hopefully, it captures the council's expectations, and if there are things, we appreciate any feedback as to whether there's things that you think we need to get done this year that are not on that list. Otherwise, we stand for any questions about the proposed plan. Oh, the proposed plan also, as we do every year, looks out a couple of years to try to anticipate what are the major things coming up in 2016 and 2017. So sometimes there's things that you wonder, why isn't it on this list for this year? Well, it's too much for this year, and it's on next year or the year after.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mr. Stevens? Councilmember Green?
I had a question on the police department's strategic plan implementation that might be for Chief Colley. In the description, it identifies to partner with a local business to design and implement a prototype security camera system that connects directly to police dispatch. Where would that be utilized?
Well, what we're thinking is that we would partner with a local bank or another type of business, and if there was a crime that was committed there, then we would be able to pull up that video real time in our police dispatch and be able to report to the officers who are responding exactly what is going on. So we like to do that as a prototype, and if we can make that work, we can spread that out and go to other businesses throughout the town to make that same technology work for both of us.
Okay. And then I had another question, and I wish Chief Morales were here to answer, but you could probably answer, too. A couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I don't recall, I had sent you both an email about an app that was developed, I think somewhere up northern Michigan, maybe, area?
Right, on the CPR?
Yes, that, you know, alerted those in a certain range if there was, you know, a 911 call that was in progress, and it would call on those who had maybe medical experience to go to that scene before paramedics arrived. Is that something we could look at implementing? Look at the cost of something like that?
I certainly think it's worth looking at. I did pull that app up and did a little research on the phone just to see what it was all about. It did seem like it was something that we could research further. I haven't had an opportunity to speak with Chief Morales about that further, but it's certainly something we could put on our list to do.
Okay. I'd like to see us maybe look at something like that if it's possible.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You know, Chief, after the meeting earlier tonight, I know a financial advisory firm that would like to have cameras around there as well, so just something to consider.
Sure, if you can let me know who that might be, I'll reach out to him.
Touch base offline.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Mark was at the...
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open this up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this item. See none, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to council for action. So I move to approve the 2015 Major Projects Work Program as submitted. Do you have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Item 19 is Ordinance Number 2015-07, an ordinance amending Section 2.17 of the Municipal Code authorizing a hearing officer to serve as the local licensing authority. Second reading. Sally Mazer?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the ordinance as it was presented on first reading, but I did want to review for just a second the proposed process for selecting the hearing officer. We have advertised on the CML attorney's list serve, the Douglas County Bar Association posted to their website. We sent out over 400 letters to individuals' attorneys who are on our business license list. We've put it on our liquor licensing webpage and done a variety of other things to get the word out. We are beginning to get applications. So what we recommend is that a subcommittee, including Councilmember Wilson, who's the liaison to the Liquor Authority, Kathleen Kelly, who's the Liquor Authority's attorney, and staff from the clerk's office, get together, review those applications, and prepare a recommendation to come back to council for the selected candidate. And if that's acceptable, council will proceed that way. If not, we can proceed in a variety of other ways, which we can discuss if there's any questions. Otherwise, the ordinance stands as having a hearing officer, a local attorney, replace our citizen-appointed board to hear applications for new licenses, violations of the liquor code, and anything else that we would refer to him that the clerk's office had questions or concerns about before proceeding on it.
Thank you, Ms. Mazer. Any questions or comments for town clerk on this issue? We'll open it up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment, and see none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll bring see a member who closed the public comment, and we'll bring it back to Council for action.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 2015-7.
Do you have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion does carry 6-0. Item 20 is Ordinance Number 2015-11, an ordinance adopting a new Chapter 2.03 of the Castle Rock Municipal Code concerning appointment of an acting town manager. First reading. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a furtherance of the discussion we had at the February 3rd Council meeting to provide greater clarity to provisions in the town charter regarding appointment of acting town manager. So basically, what this does is it creates two separate and distinct systems. When the, there's a vacancy in the position of town manager due to resignation or termination, then that has to be filled by the Town Council. And the process, the, the method of doing so, timelines for doing so, making clear that when the Council appoints an acting town manager due to a vacancy, that person has full authority and responsibility of the position of town manager that's set forth in here. When there is a temporary absence of the town manager, or the town manager is on vacation or disabled or, or ill or whatever, then this makes clear that it's the town manager's authority and responsibility to designate someone to be acting town manager for that temporary period of absence, not to exceed 30 days. And that whoever the town manager designates in that capacity has the full authority of the position of the town manager. So that just cleans up and makes that clear, so there's no ambiguity. The only change from what we had discussed on February 3rd is originally, we had suggested that when the town manager is going to appoint someone to be acting town manager in the event of a temporary absence, that that be limited to a few department head positions. Upon further thought about that, especially given our upcoming acting manager situation, so in that case, we would have an acting, acting manager. We thought it would be better to have more people eligible to serve in that capacity, rather than just limiting it to a couple. So in this code amendment, we broaden that to say that any department head who, whose appointment as a department head has been ratified by the Town Council would be eligible to serve as an acting town manager. So that means, what does that mean? Well, Council had, we have a, a resolution that, that stipulates what's a department head position. Anybody appointed to that position on a permanent basis has to be ratified or approved by the Council. So all current department heads, the Council has approved. That means is that if someone were appointed as an acting department head, they would not be eligible to serve as an acting town manager. It has to be someone who the Council has approved as a permanent department head. So that's the only proposed change from what we discussed two weeks ago. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Stevens? Councilmember Green?
Just have a couple of questions and a quick comment. I, I do like seeing this expanded to department heads, rather than just limiting, limiting it to police chief and fire chief. Allows for potential vacation, time off, and whatnot. But I do have a, a little bit of a concern, if I understood you correctly, that any one who is appointed as acting town manager has full authority of the town manager. So this acting town manager, we're acting in, for three weeks, they would have ability to reorg, hire, fire, restructure?
At their own risk.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, but they, they have that authority.
That could be the end of their employment upon the return of the permanent town manager. But obviously, the, yes, that would be technically true, because you, you can't, as Bob can address, it'd be very difficult to say as a matter of law that someone has some of the authority of the town manager, but not, not other. So I think that would be technically true. I don't think that would be very likely to occur. And obviously, if, you know, someone over, someone does something of that magnitude, when the town manager returns, the town manager could overturn that, I guess.
Plus, the, the ordinance provides that the Council can block an appointment, or they can rescind an appointment. So in the extreme example where you've got an, an acting town manager gone rogue, Mayor calls a special emergency council meeting the next day and, you know, deals with the issue at hand. So the Council still retains a large degree of discretion.
Guess I still have that discretion, even though it's a personnel issue, it's because it's, okay.
Right, exactly, and that's why word came up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? No? Okay, we'll open this up to the public, if anyone in the public would like to comment. See a member who closed the public comment, we'll bring it back to Council for action.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting a new Chapter 2.03 of the Castle Rock Municipal Code concerning appointment of an acting town manager on first reading.
Second. Do you have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion does pass 6-0.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:00 PM.
Second. Do you have a motion with a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion does carry 6-0. So Bob, are you acting like you're going to do the neighborhood traffic calming program?
It's, it's up to you, folks. I'm, I'm prepared to do it if you'd like. If you'd like to postpone this to a future date, we could certainly do that.
Let, let me just check. Wait, how long is the present? I'm sorry, Mark.
It's now a time-sensitive matter.
Not a time-sensitive matter. The, the presentation isn't very long, but the discussion might be. I'm not sure where Council wants to go with that discussion, but...
Okay, does, does Council think we can postpone this table it for a future time and go ahead and go into executive session?
As long as we put it at the ready end of the executive.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I move that, do, do we need the table? This, or we can, okay. All right, so we can do, all right, so, sorry, Bob. Okay. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment of an acting town manager as a personnel matter under CRS 24-6-4024F.I., not to return.
Second.
Do you have a motion with a second? Mr. Slence?
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. Does the Council desire then to limit the executive session till 10 o'clock as well? Because that's when the meeting, or is there a need to give you latitude?
I, I, I mean, we can try to limit it to, to 10 o'clock, but I think we need the latitude to go to 10:30 if necessary, if I don't get beaten by my colleagues before then.
It takes a unanimous...
It does take a unanimous vote, so. Do, do we need to have that motion now, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I move to extend the meeting to a maximum time of 10:30 PM. Someone's got a man up here.
I manned up. Give me five man up.
All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That motion miraculously passes 6-0. And with that, we are adjourned.